Done before two o'clock in the morning, no matter what's starting. Is it some sort of meteor shower or?
The lunar eclipse.
Oh, okay, cool, cool, cool.
It's the longest one in like the last four hundred and eighty years or something.
Nice, nice. All right, well, it's definitely our mission to be able to see that. Looks like it's seven o'clock, so. I'll go ahead and call the, oh, looks like Pam is not here yet, huh?
This is about my last chance to have a meeting that runs till two in the morning, though. We've never done that, so.
You're gonna have to set a different goal, Steve.
I think we made twelve thirty one time, but I think that was it.
Was that before my time?
No, I think that's after, uh, I think that was.
Okay, we were together for that event, okay. Well, um, I haven't heard anything from Pam about. Not coming, so I'm assuming she's just a little bit late to the party. We have a hefty agenda, so I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order and I'll simultaneously text Pam. Okay, so I will call to order the Thursday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one special meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. And I'm gonna hand it over to Dave so he can let us know about participating remotely, although it looks like it's just us right now, so you can abbreviate that maybe, Dave?
Yeah, it is just us, so I will.
Okay.
Sure, typical kind of logistics, make sure you make your name, note your name when you're making a motion, if you make a motion. And anybody who may join will just remind us to stay muted when they're not engaging with the board. I should take a roll call just to make sure you can all hear, though, so please indicate you're here when your name is called. Miss Danini?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Ms. Steckler? Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. All right, first up, we've got citizens input for items that are not on the agenda. Looks like Pam is joining us. Welcome, Pam. We're just here at Citizens Input. Hello? Do you wanna say something so we're sure you can be heard?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you're heard, fantastic. All right, it looks like we have no citizens input. So let's move on to the continuation of the presentation of the draft twenty twenty-two annual operating budget. Dave, will you be, uh, Dave Probaka, will you be doing an introduction?
I'm just gonna kick us right off, if you're ready to go, just pick right up where we.
Let's go, sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I do have something, a question about the ARPA funds. How are they being handled in the budget? Are we, by eventually passing the budget, are we appropriating them for any certain thing? How, how, could you give us a little overview of how that's working? Because we'll have, we'll have that work session after, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have the work session between the tentative budget adoption and the final budget adoption, so that's set for December seventh. The way that Eric and I are accounting for them right now is as just as committed fund balance in the general fund. It's not exactly the, the right designation, but it's consistent with how we earmark funds and other of our governmental funds, like for sinking funds, et cetera, I'll probably get into some of that later, but we really just wanted to segregate that, those monies for the purposes of the discussion that we're having on Tuesday, that we had on Tuesday, we're having this evening. If the board is prepared to commit funds to certain known projects, we can unencumber those funds. Or if you want to wait until the work session on, which we advertise as a special meeting, so action can be taken. We can modify the budget document on December seventh and have it ready, have those amendments allocating those funds ready for December thirteenth for the final adoption. An alternative could be if the board's not ready to commit funds at the conclusion of that special meeting, we can keep them as encumbered for the time, and then we can amend the budget after it gets adopted in December. We can do that even into twenty twenty-two. In fact, we commonly do that as, as needed based on other unforeseen items or modifications to different funds. So we think that by designating them as committed fund balance in the general fund right now, that's really the best way that we could properly segregate those monies. And then, as I said, if we come across things either through the discussion this evening that we think are eligible uses of those funds, and we're gonna cover some of those cost centers this evening, stormwater, other kinds of projects, economic development, perhaps. If you're ready to, we can free those up and then allocate them accordingly. Otherwise, there's no immediate urgency to do something. They'll continue to appear as committed fund balance until the board elects to appropriate them in some way.
Thank you, perfect. Does anybody have any questions about that? All right, now we can jump right in, thank you.
All right, so picking right up where we left off, we're jumping around the document a little bit, but page sixty-seven starts the expenditure portion of the budget, beginning with general government. And that is, as it implies, largely for the expenditures associated with the elected officials, you know, general expenditures like the volunteer appreciation dinner. So I'll stop, I'll start right from the top, and unlike some of the other departments, there's no accomplishments section that kind of ties into the introduction of the budget, but you see an organizational chart at the top of page sixty-seven. Supervisors' salaries, and by the way, I don't intend to share screen for this, but when we get into some of the, the bigger funds, we can, you know, we can do that. Unless somebody wants to see ours, is not able to follow along at home. Supervisor salaries, those are set by the Home Rule Charter, that stays the same every year. There are monthly installments of three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And if you do the math, it totals at twenty thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. General expense items under four hundred dot two forty, as I mentioned a moment ago, this is where we commonly apply the costs associated with the volunteer appreciation dinner. Of course, we haven't had an opportunity to do that this year or last year, but we're hopeful that in twenty twenty-two, we can pick that tradition up. This also covers a lot of miscellaneous expenditures, if we have any refreshments at that any of our meetings, board member meal allowances, if you travel for a conference, conference or something, anything like promotional, so we have that set at five thousand dollars, which is fairly stable throughout the years. CNET contribution is kind of a, of a trailing formula. And annually, Cindy Hahn, the CNET Director, will come and present to the board and describe a little bit about how that formula is, is determined, but it's really, it's not the usage from this year that's feeding, you know, how much, how many programs we sponsored for this year that's feeding into our numbers for twenty twenty-two. It really has a lagging impact, so you'll see a little bit of an increase associated with that. We haven't covered any new major meetings, we're not covering any new authorities, boards, and commissions, or proposing that we will in the upcoming year unless the board wants to expand that coverage. But we do have special programming that comes up throughout the year. This meeting is, is an example of that. And those all tie into how our formula and our allocation is determined. Very small line, yeah, please.
I have a question, I don't know if it matters or not, but percentage is still on there as, as a board member.
Yep, we will make that adjustment, thank you. And under the, the, on top of the next page, very small dollar amount for mileage reimbursements. Commonly don't use that, but if you do travel for a conference, you are able to submit that for reimbursement at the IRS rate. Advertising and printing under this account is a new, are under this umbrella, general government is a new account, and it's kind of a distillation of several different accounts that we've used this for in the past. We think this is gonna be an easier way to approach these, and it, and it covers advertisements, legal advertisements, when we have job vacancies. If there's ever a need for executive recruitment, department head level, manager level, whatever, they could come out of this account. And also anything that we do with outreach, for example, law enforcement, we try to actually, we've been trying to do this with all of our vacancies. Try to make a more concerted effort to reach out to communities of color, to different urbanized areas that we may be able to draw a more diverse applicant pool from, and so this is where that, those, those funds would be appropriated. Was there? Due subscriptions and memberships, it's largely a very stable item, but I did drop it a little bit this year, just because this is where our membership in the Public Employer Labor Relations Advisory Service, or PALRAS, comes from. Our membership with the Pennsylvania Municipal League, which is substantially discounted because of the number of programs we participate in. Member in the Chamber, Member of Center County Association of Township Officials, International Town Gown Association Membership only is what we're proposing this year. Not doing, not proposing any conferences or travel or additional training, but it provides us access to their knowledge network. And the annual summit of the Pennsylvania Municipal League, that's where I actually dialed the, the allocation down. We have historically budgeted for all five members of the board to attend, but very rarely, if ever, do more than one or two elect to go to that summit, so I, I made that a little bit of a smaller appropriation this year. That's that, that's general government. Anybody has any questions?
Dave, I just wanted to ask about going back to the volunteer dinner and volunteer recognition, so I just wanted, you know, we missed that, that was always a nice event, so, you know, again, too bad we couldn't do that this year again, so. But I'm hoping that there's some other way that we can acknowledge all, all the ABC volunteers, so with something.
We're gonna get coffee mugs with our logo on it. What we, Angela Colkey's already got the process going for those, and we'll distribute those to all our ABC members. This is a small token, I think you're right, ideally, that the dinner is really a great way to recognize their contribution. Hopefully, next year, we can pick that up again.
Yeah, I think, I think we should plan on that, and then the other thing I was gonna bring up is training for ABC members. Is that under, is that miscellaneous training?
It could be for board of supervisors, if, for example, like Miss Danini noted the other day that there was a conference that she wanted, is interested in attending, actually, I guess you already attended it, it was.
Yeah.
That's where this would come from. There, the planning commission training is, Jen, I'll get to that a little later this evening. The planning commission budget, I don't think that there's anything in here for park and rec training, or I guess we'll get that on administration, if it's there, I'm just trying to remember, or tree commission. But we definitely have some appropriation and for planning commission members to get training.
Great, okay, so those are by department, okay, because I was.
Yeah.
Great, okay, so I was particularly curious about the planning commission training, just making sure that they're being, you know, that all that stuff is available to them, and then for the tree commission, I had seen something offered by Ag Extension that wasn't free, but it had to do with urban canopy and that kind of thing. So I thought something like that would be great for planning or tree commission members, so, okay, I'll look for that as we get to that stuff, thanks.
And I'd like to bounce back to your first comment about the appreciation dinner. Can we decide now that no matter what happens with the pandemic within reason? That we have something, even if it has to be in the summertime and a picnic and outside at one of our parks? So we can, can we make sure that, that we do something? That's safe.
Laura, I think that's a, I like that too, just because then it could maybe be sooner and not in October or toward the end of the year. Because I think that's when it was, wasn't it?
I thought it was April.
Oh.
I might be wrong.
It's usually in the fall.
Okay.
I think it's usually a fall event.
But, I mean, you know, because I think that I wouldn't count on us being any, in any better of a situation than we are right now, and at least I'll speak for myself. I'm still pretty leery about being in a room of a hundred people eating, so. But we really, we, I've really, we've really all missed it, so let's, you know, do it outside, maybe, thanks.
Yeah, I, I like the picnic idea, I wrote that down, we'll see if we could, we could do something around that, that's a good, good thought. And I happen to know that the Public Works Director is a fantastic grill operator. And although we haven't exercised his skills in any official capacity recently, I'm sure.
I was thinking we could get that manager dunking box back.
Oh, that was. That was so cold, that was so cold. It was like tap water.
I just love that it was actually a real thing in Ferguson Township at one point. Okay, anyway.
All right. So if there's nothing else under general government, can move on to executive, which is largely the administrative department under page, starting on page seventy with an org chart, mission statement and some goals. You can read that at your leisure, beginning on page seventy-one, starts at the top. Salaries for the township manager, the assistant township manager, the human resources administrator are all captured under those first, and then administrative staff, which is a full-time community communications coordinator and a recording secretary, part-time recording secretary are accounted for under this budget as well. And then office supplies, fairly self-explanatory, reducing that number a little bit in the upcoming year. To be more reflective of actual expenditures. General expense is also kind of a petty cash shredding documents falls under this account. Any meals that administrative staff has for meetings, lunch meetings, et cetera. There's a small part of that, and also sort of a catch-all for any other general expenditures will fall under four oh one dot two forty.
Hey, Dave?
Yeah.
Just a note, under four oh one two forty.
We, shredding, shredding is elsewhere now.
Yeah, I mean, it might not affect your budget, but I just wanted, you know, I, I do have that in four oh nine.
Yeah, it's, you're right, there's a good point, it, it's not, it's not, it doesn't impact the number, but we should change the narrative, so we'll, we'll get that out of there, too. Since we have our, our separate line item for that. All right, thank you. And then, under electronic equipment maintenance, that's for our, well, it's, it's been reduced this year since, as you'll learn a little bit later, what we're presenting or proposing is that we purchase a copier for our administrative finance and planning and zoning departments, and so that'll, that'll appear later on in the budget, so we've had, we've been able to remove our line item for the leasing of that machine, which is currently what we, what we do. You'll see a item in there for the postage meter, which we lease. Moving along to communications, I'll ask Centrice to talk about this account and community engagement, too, after that, actually, so. But you have to unmute first, though, that's, that's the deal.
Thank you, Dave, all right. Let me pull it up here. So for communications, we have continued to have a allocation for the employee cell phone. That stayed the same at seven twenty-five, the Federal Express. So everything here remains the same, with the exception of a slight increase to the fall-spring newsletter, the communications coordinator has, has suggested that a consideration be given to have print newsletters for increased or enhanced quality of the.
Full color print.
Full color, what's, my apologies.
You said print, yeah, just full color.
Full color, yes, yes. So there's been a slight increase there with, based on estimates that we received from the, the printing and mailing services that we currently use. Coffee and Conversation was increased by a hundred dollars, so just a slight uptick there. And then the promotional material, we, last year, you would find in the twenty twenty budget miscellaneous promotional materials, and what we had allocated, I think, was a thousand dollars in twenty twenty. So there's a little bit of an increase with the recommendation that the communications coordinator and myself worked to try and think of some additional creative ways to get information out into the residents, understanding that we have some diverse wards and, and different ways that people are connecting. We've received a lot of feedback from ABC members that we could do some things differently, and we agree. Everything ranging from sending notifications out early in the year that are by mail, just identifying some of the hot topics that we'll be discussing in the upcoming years. But we wanted to provide, or we wanted to recommend that there might be a need for some additional research, additional funds to, to be able to do additional communications that include more print, direct mailing to residents. And then you'll see the allocation again for the second time for the Zoom account, so we're proposing we maintain two accounts, and the US Postal Service Routine postage remains the same as budgeted for last year, as well as special mailings. Constant contact still in there, we have the social media promotions and tools. Notably, the HootSuite is a recommendation that also comes from the communications coordinator. HootSuite is a pretty interesting tool, so it allows for the communications coordinator to be able to schedule posts in advance. So when his absence, rather than there be a, an absent communication period of time or delayed communications coming through his office, he can schedule advanced communications through this tool called HootSuite. So it does come at an eight hundred dollar annual subscription fee, and it has a couple of other perks that allow us to be able to hone in and target messages to certain geographic areas. Survey Monkey is also an additional recommended tool we have used. What we have seen is that within each of the departments, there are several survey monkeys that are, survey monkey accounts that have been open to distribute surveys within the township, so we, we'd like to kind of streamline the number of surveys that we have, but also be able to log in with one account and be able to have a history of all previous surveys. So any one staff member can log into a Ferguson Township Survey Monkey account and be able to review data collected and be able to also leverage some of the features that come with having a paid account, which is also, you know, also involves trying to, to enhance some of the tools and being able to increase. Let's see, I think there's a cap of twenty responses with the free Survey Monkey account. So if we had more than twenty residents that wanted to respond to Survey Monkey, and twenty's an estimated number, I can't recall, it, it's a low number, we have to then pay additional money to be able to allow any additional responses to come, be, come, come in and beyond the, the twenty cap number. So the subscription per Survey Monkey is being recommended, and as well as the welcome postcard to new residents, which I believe is also in the twenty twenty budget. Any questions? Yes, Laura?
Thanks, Centrice, I have two questions. Constant contact, so that's that email program. That is what people sign up for when they're joining, like if they want to get agendas for Parks Committee or something like that, that's, that's that system that manages that, correct?
Yes.
So I feel like that's an incredible bargain. And I want to put a, I'm putting a pin in this one, because I'd like our board to have a discussion sometime next year about recommending to COG that they use constant contact. I don't know, I know, I'm sorry, this is a little of an aside, and we'll talk about it in the agenda item, but there's been, they, they have a lot of, they spend a ton of time having people be put on and taken off of email lists, and this email list is for this and that and the other, and it's, I'm constantly like dropped off lists and have issues with our lists. And I've wondered why they didn't use constant contact, and I thought, oh, it must be expensive, but it's really not expensive. That seems like a great price to have all that ability to manage lists almost, almost automatically, so that's more of a comment than a question. My question, I do have a question about promotional material. So recently, I'm sure that you all have tuned into me saying things about the false narratives that were really spread. I'm gonna say in the past two local election cycles, really, it just seems like it's getting worse. Could we, as a board, you know, utilize some of those promotional material dollars to hone in on certain important topics that we hear again and again, just infused with misinformation that we could maybe utilize those promotional material dollars to be very specific about targeting that misinformation? And I'm, I'm talking more like along lines of like policy stuff, right? So that's why I'm saying, like, could the board use some of those dollars? Could, could, could that be something that we talk about happening in the new year? Or Dave, am I not thinking of those materials at all in the right way, and this needs to be a larger conversation?
I, I think that is where, if it were, if it were print material or an online publication or something like that, this would fall under, uh, uh, this would encompass a fairly broad category of expenditures, including any kind of public outreach and informational campaigns that the board may be interested in pursuing.
Great, 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 okay, great, thank you so much, okay, that's, that's all, thank you. Okay. Any other questions before I move into community engagement? Okay, I'll just move on, then. So moving into community engagement, so the community engagement internship program, I, I just want to spend a little bit of time here. So last year, we had budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars, and we, as you can see, we did not have to utilize all of that, and it was because we were able to leverage a partnership with Penn State Work Study Program. It's called a federal-funded community
community, it's a, wow, let me just, it's called the Penn State Community Service Federal Work Study Program. We were able to partner with them, and through that program, they paid the entire hourly wages of our intern, Sasha Wells. And so it was a great program, we hope to be able to leverage that again in the future, but there's never a guarantee. So with the proposed allocation here going up to five thousand, the idea here is instead of trying to have two to three interns, what I would be suggesting as an alternative for the board's consideration is that we have, we focus on recruiting for all the interns, I know that there are a few internship positions in public works. If planning were to try and have interest in wanting to recruit an intern, the idea is that we would have designated dollars, but, you know, estimated at about a thousand to do recruitment and attend career fairs, and, and really try to recruit for students to fill all of our internship positions across all the departments of Ferguson Township. And through this particular program, focus on trying to bring a student in that would serve in the administration office only in the summertime. So we'd be proposing an eight-week program for one intern to be able to dedicate their time, his or her time, either providing assistance with parks and recreation or marketing and, or excuse me, communications and community engagement. So with that in mind, that's hopefully giving you a little bit of insight as to why it went down to twenty, it was five thousand in twenty twenty, or excuse me, twenty nineteen, and it went down to twenty-five hundred into twenty twenty, and now we're proposing with a very intentional program laid out to, to increase it back to five thousand. Meals for events, there's budgeted, I think we, we slightly, we brought that down to five hundred, rather than the thousand we had allocated last year. Community engagement outreach and events, we maintained the request for an allocation of a thousand, and that's to do different events. Last night, we held an event. different events. Last night we held an event at Discovery Space. It's, that's an example of of being able to facilitate community outreach events. As well as we're proposing to host a business roundtable in twenty twenty-two with businesses and that money would support either the location and or any type of refreshments that we might want to provide for businesses to join. And that's all that I have for community engagement. Any questions?
So there's
Lisa, has her hand up? Did you have a question, Lisa?
Thanks. So the the internship, the five thousand dollars, is that, how many interns is that for? Is that for the one eight-week intern or?
So the five thousand, you know, we're estimating between five hundred and a thousand dollars to to sign up and attend the career fairs here at Penn State. We've also partnered with the community school up the road. Can't think of their not young scholars, the South, South Hills Business School, we partner with them as well as Lock Haven. So there's, you know, there's some fees. Sometimes we are able to get them waived, but we have to pay that registration fee. So we're estimating between five hundred to a thousand to go and do some recruitment for our, for what we're proposing, one intern in the administration office. But then within the department, there are other internship positions that are being proposed, for example, in Public Works. We would provide support to help recruit those interns, but their wages would be paid out of, for example, Public Works budget. And then the remaining funds that would be there. So we're proposing an intern to come into the administration office for eight weeks at about fifteen dollars an hour, averaging about thirty hours a week, which would come to about thirty six hundred. So that plus the, you know, the money for recruitment, that's how we get to about five thousand.
Gotcha, okay. And then I just need to backtrack for one minute back to the previous section with the welcome postcard. I was just curious about who all that goes to and is it really literally just a postcard?
Yes, I I don't have one in front of me. So actually, whenever there's a new homeowner that moves into the township, we get monthly updates from the county saying that there's been a closing. And so once we have that information, the way the process would work is we we send a postcard just saying, welcome to Ferguson Township and we provide a QR code, also a link just saying, you know, please visit Ferguson Township's website and provides them with a wealth of different ways they can get involved and and better understanding services that are provided here by Ferguson, the region, et cetera. So it's a, it's a postcard that doesn't go to every resident, but it goes to every resident that has recently closed on a house in Ferguson Township.
And that QR code goes to like a landing page for new residents that has?
Yes.
That, that's fantastic.
Yeah, it takes them to a welcome guide that I did have.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll check, I'll check it out. But okay, I was really curious about what all was involved in that. It'd be great if there were, you know, a little link there for how to sign up for an ABC, you know, different things.
Well, yeah, the Welcome Guide has all of that. So it's approximately like ten pages. And and so the QR code takes you to the website where we host the Welcome Guide and the Welcome Guide has information about ABCs, regional services, local services. It it it's a wealth of information. I'm happy to send that over to the board for review. I'll send a link so you can review the Welcome Guide.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, then moving right on, and I noticed I misspoke earlier. I'll get to that in a minute. The transportation costs, same thing as it was under general government, it's for mileage reimbursement. We rarely tap into that account since majority of the time employees are traveling, they're using a municipal vehicle. Advertising and Printing under four oh one dot three forty, bottom of page seventy-two and top of page seventy-three. That covers our codification expenses. So we have a membership with General Code and they handle all of our ordinance codifications. This covers the work that they provide in order to format all of our newly adopted ordinances, make them available under Ecode three sixty, their online platform. Legal advertisements are for any, any legal notices. And Eric, we'll, you and I'll have to check on this number. This may change since we moved them under four hundred three forty. I got to make sure that we it's possible that we didn't drop that. So this number might go down to ten thousand. Taking that nine K out. Eric, you got that?
He gave a thumbs up when you weren't looking. I don't know why this line always bothers me. I always want them to do the service for free. I don't know why. But Dave, isn't it true that we have some things that are like maybe it's older resolutions? Is that perhaps it that are not yet available online? Is it the older resolutions that aren't available?
I'm not
I know, I know I've looked for things before. I think it's in the the index of resolutions and they stop at a certain year. Does that sound right?
We we do have the ability to upload resolutions to the Ecode platform, to the General Code platform. We're pretty backlogged on that. I think I was doing that in probably twenty fifteen and then
I feel this is a screaming intern. I'm just putting two and two together. This is just screaming intern project to me. That's kind of why I'm bringing it up because we don't have the staff resources to do that, but it would be a valuable thing to be done. And so I'm bringing it up in the context of the budget because that would be where the resources would come from to get it done. And I know it's not really a priority, but I can't tell you how many times I've looked for something and it's not there and I think it's because it's an older resolution.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, that's a good project idea. We could probably get to some of that backlog in fairly short order.
And I mean, it's, I don't know, something maybe that like the board can remember as a priority when we're, you know, thinking of fun projects and things that we want to have done because it really relates transparency, I think. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Four oh one dot three fifty is my municipal bond. I I'm required to be bonded to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And our bond premium has not changed, my bond premium is not changing in twenty twenty-two. Page seventy recruitment, this is where I misspoke. I have no idea why. I just got my wires crossed or something. This is the appropriation that I have for executive department head recruitment and legal or advertising for job postings. The four hundred dot three forty was for the legal advertisements for board meetings, et cetera. So everything I said before, pretend I said it for this account and we'll be, we'll be right back to normal. This is, that's the new account. So four oh one dot four twenty, do subscriptions and memberships. That's been fairly this unchanged this year. You'll see, we really didn't use much of that allocation in twenty twenty-one, primarily because a majority of our conferences were still virtual. So the APMM Conference was a virtual meeting. That's the, so this has our membership, Centris and my membership to the Association of Pennsylvania Municipal Management. Couple of publications that we subscribe to. The Governing Magazine, Pennsylvania and Pennsylvania Township, or Pennsylvania and Township News, PA Township News, which is a publication from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. Conference this year is in person, so I have an allocation in here for the Assistant Manager and myself to attend. It's at the Hotel Hershey in May, on the conference chair this year, so I should have my lodging and registration comped. PelRAS is an annual conference held in March each year. We haven't had that for some years now in a, in a live and it's actually it's at the Penn Stater, so it's pretty local. This is registration fees for that. It's a human relations and labor relations, human resources, labor relations conference. So you'll see that there's an appropriation in there for myself, the Assistant Manager and the Human Resource Administrator to attend that. ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association, our membership dues are provided under this account. Both Centris and I are full members of that organization. The conference in twenty twenty-two is being held in Columbus, Ohio, so we don't have to worry about airfare. This is just for lodging and registration and meals for that conference. And like last year, I'm requesting that the Assistant Manager and I both be allowed to attend. APMM Executive Development Conference, typically just me. That's done in February of each year and that's registration and lodging. Miscellaneous training under there as well. Society of Human Resource Management is for the Human Resource Administrator as well as her certification. And then the one, I guess, new appearance in this budget is a, Centris has requested to go through the Leadership Center County Program, which I think would be a valuable experience for her and her position and township. I went through it in twenty sixteen, perhaps some of you did as well. Dave, I think you're an LCC grad, aren't you?
I sure am, Dave.
I don't, I don't want to ask what year. I won't even, I won't even ask you what your class is.
Founding, founding member.
You're a founding member, yes. So this is a, it's a six-month approximately program. There, it's not a everyday thing. There's usually one or two program days each of those months and you get a fuller exposure to all that Center County has to offer, a lot of good networking opportunities. You learn about some of the human services organizations, some of the governmental organizations that operate in the county. And it's, it's a good, good positive experience. So that's executive. If there are any questions, comments, or changes. All right, so legal starts on page eighty-three, so jumping around just a wee bit. There are three line items under this broader category. One is our Solicitor Engagement, which is a retainer. So that hasn't changed this year. That's a twenty thousand dollar annual retainer. And then there is a additional appropriation in there for items that are not covered under Babs Callan's standard engagement. So the retainer has a list of services, reviewing legal documents, preparing ordinances and recording instruments with the county, providing general legal counsel to the board and to the manager. That's all covered under that retainer umbrella, but then any special litigation items that are, that are unforeseen that come up throughout the year may not be part of that retainer. So we try to buffer that with an additional appropriation in that account. Special counsel is for mostly for human resources and labor relations, but there are other counsel, counseling needs that appear from time to time. We are maybe about a quarter way through negotiating a new collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters. So I've kept this amount at what our projected expenditures are in twenty twenty-one. It's really difficult to tell whether, I I don't anticipate this full amount being needed for the the labor negotiations, but anticipating anything else that may come up throughout the year, that would be captured under Special Counsel. And then I have a small carry forward under the Legal Cable Consortium. This is anything that we can't wrap up this year pertaining to the negotiation of a Windstream DNE franchise, cable franchise agreement renewal. Township brought in Cohen Law Group and working with the State College Borough and Phil Pipta, the attorney in that firm, has been starting the, getting the process going for a negotiated renewal of that agreement and a franchise fee audit. So I think we'll have a majority of the work done by the end of the year. I think we'll be looking at adopting perhaps a presenting for adoption, a new agreement in December, December thirteenth. But if any of those costs spill over into the new year, I I put a little money in there to capture that. Questions or comments on legal? Okay, all right, all right. Information technology starts on page eighty-six, jumping around a little bit again. This is sort of a collaborative effort, primarily between the Assistant Manager and the Finance Director and the Manager, but everyone sort of has their hand in this, our IT needs. Small appropriation under general expense for any miscellaneous items. Really, a majority of this falls under four oh seven dot two fifty-two and we've been consolidating, you may remember a few years ago, the board asked that we start to bring IT under one, under one roof and seems like an easy task, but it's actually taken us a few years to, you know, really put all these things together and we're still really not done. We still have some work to do, but Eric itemizes out these expenses. So you can see those in the table. There was a a bit of an increase proposed this year. And Eric, maybe, I don't know if you want to talk specifically about what those, where those, where that increase came from.
Oh, I, I think we added the Blue Beam, which wasn't on there before we bought those. I don't think there's any one particular item. I think it's just a general increase over the previous year. The gas boy.
Right, so
going up a little bit. Yeah, nothing I can just possibly the Center Wisp went up a little bit because we didn't have that last year, but that was yeah, it was nothing, while the Esri, they did want to go to an enterprise edition, which is another twenty five hundred dollars.
Right, so we're, we're upgrading some of our licenses with our GIS. Well, one of our licenses for our GIS technician, give James Progar a little more functionality and a little more ability to utilize the software to its full extent. We think that'll be a benefit to the township, not just to help, of course, with our mapping needs and public works and planning and zoning, but even to make it a more public facing, you know, document where we can, we can do some additional mapping and and make those available online. The enterprise license is sort of the I don't, it's probably not the top. Esri has a very complicated licensing structure and they really corner the market on GIS technology. So it's a challenging concept for me to even wrap, wrap my head around, even though I've been trying for several years. Eric talked about our internet service, little bit of an increase in that using Center Wisp over Comcast, but truthfully, it's it's almost a wash and and we're getting much higher speeds. There are additional partners, so that what the, the board saw in the engagement of sixteen hundred dollars a month has actually come down because more people have participated, including Patent Township. And I think State College Borough is in that, is is there with us too. So interesting things coming there. Dave talked about, or excuse me, Eric talked about Blue Beam, which is used to view contract documents or construction documents, large plans. That's how they're submitted online and reviewed. And it's used by Center Region Code Administration, so there's a mutual exchange of information that's enabled by that, presumably or possibly. I don't know if there's anything specifically that I wanted to call out in here. Synopsis Financial Modeling Software, I I think we're hoping to get a little more utilization out of that this year. We did use it for some modeling scenarios through the collective bargaining process as well as for some of the possible options for using the Federal Cares Act money that came in. So we can, it's pretty robust and fairly functional. We are, we're on a three-year agreement with them. This is year two. I think at the end of next year, if we're not getting any real value out of it, we we will probably back off of that. But we're hopeful that we can make more use out of that software. And that was a, that was a Cares Act reimbursable expense that was covered by COVID relief funds that came with the last act. Hi, Dave.
Hey. I don't know if it changes your number, but Blue Beam is used by four of us. There's no annual maintenance, so we'll just have to upgrade that number.
The number of of users.
Users.
From three to four, yeah.
So it costs seven thousand dollars for us to put our budget online? Is that the proper interpretation of that?
Yeah, so this is a, wait, where, where are we at here?
The ClearGov.
ClearGov.
It's not only putting it online, it's the whole software that you
Thank you. Yeah, that makes me feel better, a lot better. We could use a PDF, is what I was gonna say, okay, cool.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot more functionality to it. We can, we can get some interactive budget engagement features there too, and you'll see some of that since we're just starting to use it. It's also the way that the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. Is accepting these budgets for award submission, so we get our distinguished budget presentation award. I believe, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that was part of the impetus behind us getting this.
Yeah, yeah, it's tailored to the GFOA award program.
Does COG use it?
No, I think we're the only one around that does.
Thanks.
Least in the center region.
It's a hard road to be a leader sometimes.
Indeed. Under, if there's no other questions on that, under four oh seven dot four fifty-two. Is our maintenance agreement with Hinton Associates. And so, and they're our third-party IT service provider. They typically have a three percent increase that's kind of baked into their engagement. We're probably gonna be putting that out as a request for proposals next year to see what else is out there. No real particular issues with Hinton and Associates. It's just we've been with them now for over eight years. And testing the water from time to time is always a good idea. And then there's a small allocation for consulting with our value-added reseller, our VAR for Laserfish. Which is our digital document storage technology, our, our software. And they help us prepare online forms. You may have seen some of them, really started rolling those out with the stormwater fee. And accepting credit applications and exempting, exemption applications through that. But we're gonna do a lot more with it and. And it'll be pretty robust, hopefully, in the, in the next couple of years as we build on those forms. Replacement equipment is just a, you're kind of a standard year-to-year. As we try to, as we switch out old technology, computers, laptops. There's a couple of specific line items that are in there. For a new handheld data collector unit for our GIS system, our GIS person. So we use something called a Trimble. It's a little yellow handheld device. And I believe that that is no longer going to be supported. Where did Dave go? Did we lose him? Now we lost Dave. Okay, oh, there he is. Am I right about that, Dave?
Dave's here. Okay. I am not certain about that.
I, um, my understanding of it is that we need to trade it in for a new.
Oh, to the R1.
Yeah, to the R1.
Okay, I, I think that's correct, but I'm not hundred percent sure.
Alright, and then we also have an item in here for the replacement of our endpoints, which is our, our phone system. And those, like anything else, those, we don't do any proactive replacements of those. We just have a budget item in there in case any of them. No longer work. That's the end of information technology. We'll talk a little bit more in capital reserve about some of the servers and other bigger expenses. But that's. A general fund. Okay. Right, alright. Economic development on page one forty-eight, I think that's an eight. I can't read my own handwriting. Under community development and housing, which starts at the top of the page. And you'll see there's a. Line item in for the Center County Housing and Land Trust. They're our third-party administrator of our affordable housing program, our workforce housing program. Missy Schoonover, the director of that organization. Has requested that funds be appropriated in the amount of five thousand dollars. And then, of course, we have a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the organization that. As these workforce housing units come online, there's an additional fee per unit for those services. That's actually payable with the closing costs of the home, or perhaps they could be targets of some of the fee in lieu of workforce housing money. We haven't got there yet, but you know, we can, we can discuss that as those workforce housing units are built. But this is sort of our. Retainer, for lack of a better way to put it. Help with the administrative costs of that organization as they start to spin up this program for us. We've been contributing it for a number of years.
If, I'm embarrassed to say that I didn't realize that that's how it was working. So we're just paying them five thousand dollars every year, but nothing is happening in terms of our affordable housing yet, really.
Correct, I mean.
This is, I don't know if I love this idea, but I don't know if this is the time or place to talk about it. I mean. Theoretically, we could pay them that forever and not, nothing could happen with affordable housing. So I thought it was more of a when something's happening, we're paying a retainer, which I'm fine with. And I'm not trying to get over on somebody and not pay them for the work they're doing. But if they're not doing anything, I also don't want to be paying our tax dollars. So maybe we could talk about that some other time.
So a possible, well, first, I think Missy Schoonover. Put a lot of time in helping the planning department come up with. The fee in lieu of workforce housing numbers. How, so, so they did do some work for us in twenty twenty-one. There have been years that have been relatively stagnant, but I, I will say I think we got some value. Certainly in this, this last year, perhaps an idea is that we don't convey the five thousand dollars right away. We keep it in as a budget number. And then I can approach the board to release the funds at a future time, depending on what that. When I get the invoice, depending on what the likelihood is of some of those units coming online this year, or whatever work they, they are doing for us.
Yeah, I think maybe just talking about it again, I'm not like in crisis mode or anything. Maybe it's, it's just something to think about in the future. Lisa.
So when the, I'm sorry if you said this already, so when the fee and lieu money comes in. Will that be in a separate line item?
The, so what we'll probably recommend doing is segregating a fund. In, in the budget for workforce housing. That will be allowed to accrue a fund bounce, much like we did with Fund Thirty-One, when we got the Hubbard money for the regional debt service on parks. We would do something, and it'd be a special revenue fund. Water like traffic signals, et cetera. So that, that we'll have to talk about, perhaps modifying the budget a little bit. To, to accommodate that, if we get some of those, that appropriation in twenty twenty-two. And it, it very, very well might come in, in twenty twenty-two. They're already working on their specific implementation plan. To submit, as I understand it. So I think we'll start to see, now that the litigation is settled, some pretty quick moves in that project.
Okay, and then we will be paying our expenses that are associated with any programs we do with that money too. So like, anything we owe to the Housing and Land Trust, that money will come out of that fund.
That would certainly be my suggestion.
Yeah, that's, that's how I'd understood it. Right, and that's how I'd understood it. And I, my understanding was, we were, you know, this money could have come in. The fee and lieu could have come in last year or the year before if things had moved forward. So it was, you know, just kind of in anticipation of possibly putting Missy to work really hard any one of these years. So I don't know if there's a way to go back and. Reapportion that money from what comes in from the fee and lieu to pay back what we've been paying, you know, maybe the past two years. To kind of placeholder with the Housing and Land Trust.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to like just totally leaving everything as it is, but like as a board, like talking. I know we want to come back to affordable housing anyway, because I think some of us felt like. There was still work to be done, but we kind of had a deadline we were pushing up against. So maybe just coming back to this and talking about, like what Lisa said about. I, I don't really think I understand that. And I don't want to right now. I don't think we need to hold things up right now. But just kind of revisiting that and, and if we, if we, now that things maybe are moving. If we're good with this five thousand thing, or maybe we want to do something different, maybe just talking about it and seeing what we think. But not, but not during budget right now.
Yeah, I think I understand Ms. Strickland's question, and it's a good one. I, I think the acceptance of workforce housing fee and lieu, depending on what that number is, is gonna change this whole discussion. Quite, quite dramatically. Yeah, so we'll, we'll keep the board apprised of, of the developments in that front.
Thanks.
Sustainable Communities Collaborative is a, I put an allocation in for twenty twenty-two. Based on whether we would work with the group, the organization on a plastic bag impact fee assessment. So I use the numbers that we had a bit ago. I'm waiting on Alona Balrich, the administrator of that program. To give me an updated proposal, which of course will come in front of the board for authorization perhaps as early as December.
And this, Dave, we would, I mean, there's, there's decisions that the board needs to make before that money would be spent. Because I think we were kind of in different places in terms of where we wanted to go from here. And I, I was thinking of it more of a data collection than we're for sure gonna spend this on this study that we already have, but we didn't get the results from, kind of thing yet.
That's correct. So my orders are to get that comprehensive result summary from. The, the results list from the last engagement, working on that with Dr. Laura Fowler from the College of Law. And then getting this proposal from the Sustainability Institute, which I'm still waiting on. So once I get those, come back in front of you all for further review and deliberation. So into economic development for sixty-three dot five forty, middle of the page there. Is a typical carry-forward expenditure in the past. It's been used for. Specific economic development incentives, retention and recruitment of businesses, not just in the township, but countywide or region-wide. Probably more specifically. And this is where the funding for the Route Forty-Five Getaway Event came out of. Of course, that was reimbursable, at least in part through a grant, which would show up as revenue. Anything else that the board wants to use it for, to promote small businesses and enterprise. This would come out of that account. We've used it in the past to support the Pine Grove Mills Farmers Market. Probably a couple other examples that are escaping me, but I think that illustrates it. And these come back and, of course, there, it's a budget item. It comes in front of the board for authorization to utilize it.
Dave, oh, Steve, you had a question?
I've just had a question about the Pine Grove Farmers Market. I know in the past years, we've had a presentation each year, made a decision on it. And I, I guess, is that what you foresee for this year is? That that would come out of this, this funding if we were to continue that, or?
I, I would think so. I mean, unless the board wanted to designate something specifically for it. Typically, what I would, you know, these would be handled on a case-by-case basis. So a representative from the Farmers Market Advisory Committee were to approach the township and request an allocation. It would be presented to the board in that fashion, and then the board would make a decision about whether or not to authorize the release of those funds.
Okay, so. Okay. I don't know that we did. I didn't know if we wanted to put it in here as this, but designated item or just request that a presentation be made? Or since I won't be here next year, I just wanted to. Feel on that.
I don't think I can speak to the matter, so I'm recusing myself right now. Although I don't actually have any financial interest, so it's more of a technicality, but my heart is in it, so I'm.
Are you still on the board of it, though?
Yes, I'm on the steering committee and so is Lisa, so we.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll both remain silent for this item.
Can you get closer to your microphone? Yeah, you're a little low, Steve. We can't really hear you.
Yeah, I don't, don't have a good microphone on this computer, so. Is that working better now, or? Okay. Well, maybe I'll just yell then. I mean, I, I think, you know, I would be interested in just going ahead. I think last year we did a three thousand dollar contribution. And I guess. Given that two of the members here are not going to be taking part in that discussion. We'll have two members coming on that don't have any history with it. I would, I would say, yeah, I would propose we add, I think, three thousand was what we had this year. And we just continue that night for the next year as a designated amount. If I guess it'd be Patty and Pam are interested in doing that, because it'd only be the three of us, we'll take all three.
I'm not speaking on the matter, but as chair, it was really hard to hear you, and I just wanted to make sure Patty and Pam. Could hear you in that. Yes, I guess I just didn't realize we were putting out a particular number right now for an organization. But I guess I would just, I would be supportive of, of the, the amount.
So, that was what I was proposing to do.
Damn, were you able to hear Steve? Okay.
I can, I can recap if you'd like. So Mr. Miller's proposing that of the fifteen thousand dollars, that three thousand of it earmarked. For the Pine Grove Mills Farmers Market. And then therefore it would sort of be, I don't want to say entitlement, but they would, they would expect it. As opposed to having to come and present a request to the board during the year. Okay, I'll make that change. And then we'll just, we'll itemize it in that, in the narrative under that account.
Yeah, it'd just be, I'm just looking at it as designated part of, part of that specifically at this point. Through a presentation later.
Alright, I'm under, and the bottom of.
Question. What, was that? Was that the amount that was requested in this past year, or? Yes.
Believe so.
Might they need more?
I, I would say if they do, that, that should cover as a presentation.
Okay, so, so this will be the base, and if they need more than that, I got it. Yep, good. Okay, thanks. I'm back to stay now. I have a question about the same account, different, different topic. So my memory of this account is that it was, it was back in the day. Utilized for that portion that we used to give CBICC. And the numbers were different in the account. And I, I was thinking it was like twenty-five thousand. But now I see fifteen, and then I can't remember if last year we dropped it down because of the pandemic, maybe. And if it was dropped down because of the pandemic, maybe we want to put it back up to the twenty-five. But that's one chunk of questions, and could you help me jog my memory as to what that original number was? And then my other question is, perhaps we're gonna get to this in Jenna's presentation. But like the, but the budget for Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan. That comprises their, like, small business support, their, their identity. Like, maybe the, the welcome to PGM signs or a banner to support small business days in PGM. Like, would we be envisioning that coming out of this economic development line? Or are we maybe considering later putting something in the budget for the Small Area Plan? Similar to how we have like a line in the budget for the Northland Area Plan. Kind of just like a chunk of money that, okay, so those are my two questions. Okay, so th- those are my two questions. They're like, what was the previous to twenty twenty amount? In that budget and would that be where we get the PGM Economic Development stuff or should we think about that separately? Thanks.
So it had been up until, I think, twenty nineteen, the amount would would have been at. Anywhere from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand, typically our our annual commitment to the chamber. Or what we had committed to them as being part of the Economic Development Partnership was twenty-five thousand. And then we would have a little bit of an additional allowance. For, I'm just going back through the years, so twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it was thirty-five thousand. Forty thousand was the budget in twenty twenty and then in twenty twenty-one, wait, hold on, that can't be right. No, I think we in twenty twenty, it was fifteen thousand and our. Numbers are just wrong here and it's what shows in the budget document fifteen thousand in twenty twenty-one as well. And then twenty twenty-two, we're proposing it to remain the same. So because we don't have that obligation right now for the chamber, we don't have that annual. Fee for service. It's really just for specific economic development projects that the board may wish to pursue. So that's that fifteen K is is reflective of that release from that partnership. The second question about where we would apply appropriate funding for Pine Grove Mills. Marketing, part of it could certainly come from this budget. Some of it might come from a more advertised general marketing and advertising budget. It's different from the two hundred and fifty thousand that we're proposing that Jenna is going to talk about a little bit later. For Northland Area, that's more for capital projects. So where you might see that in Pine Grove Mills is at the conclusion of the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study. We do something similar to Northland Area that we're doing or in Pine Grove Mills that we're doing proposing to do in Northland Area. Where we develop this sinking fund over year the years that we can use to leverage grant money and affect these capital projects. So it really just depends. We don't have a specific line item for those initiatives, but something like a banner sign for marketing and event. Anything that is specific for economic development would absolutely come from this account.
Okay, okay, so can we then add this to the list of things that we revisit at the end? After we've talked about planning's budget. And we can come back to it and kind of decide what we want to do, if anything, maybe nothing then at that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's just a quick check. It's sound any better now?
Yeah, I mean, you you don't seem like you're having to shout for us to hear you.
Okay, I I phoned. Yeah, I went into the phone connection instead of computer connection, so I'll stay with that.
Now it just looks like you're dubbed because there's like a little bit of a delay. It's cool.
Possibly you have done this, but you can turn the microphone volume up on most devices. I don't know if that's.
Dave.
Under audio setting, so next to the mute button at the bottom left of the screen, there's that little up arrow. Click that up arrow and then you click on audio settings, you should get a dialogue box that pops up with your microphone. Volume. So if that's if that's.
Okay, I'll check that too then as we go here, so.
Thank you. So a tech minute.
Nothing else on economic development, just quick on this page is debt service for escrow accounts. So any money that we receive in escrow, we're required by law to deposit that in an interest bearing account. So this covers that that interest expense. I just wanted to hit that while we're on this page because I don't think we revisit that later. And that's all for administration. So I can punt to Jenna and Planning and Zoning starts on page one seventeen, if that works.
Thank you, Dave. Where is it? As Dave said, one seventeen starts planning and zoning's budget. I do want to mention on page two twenty-two of the document I have that kind of highlights the new staff. For planning and zoning as recommended through the CIP and it's the. Ordnance Enforcement Officer going from part-time to full-time for twenty twenty-two. And it took some time just to highlight what he does in the township because. It does span across more than just planning zoning of police. He does a lot of work with admin, public works and their enforcement issues, so. And then I even sat down with Jeff and sort of talked about. Things that this position could turn into if it were to go full-time and what those opportunities looked like for the township. So the ordinance enforcement officer has always handles noise complaints, property maintenance complaints, banning vehicles. Illegal sign enforcements, the weeds and grass ordinance, snow and ice, all annual complaints this year alone. One complaint resulted in fifteen cats, one fox, two chinchillas. And one coyote-like mammal being rescued from an apartment in Ferguson Township. That was an interesting one. Parking violations, he handles the recreational fire and open burn ordinance. Public Works, he handles the debris in the right of way that includes active land development plans. He works with the project managers of those sites and. Tries to handle cleaning the roadway as they're doing that developments. Escavation, excavating without a permit. He also handles those complaints and enforces our ordinance with them, junk piles. As always, he delivers all very ABC packets, land development plans when we have multiple resubmissions and whatnot and. He posts all of our properties. So potential for full-time. Brainstorming on this, we looked at short-term rental enforcement. So we can have this position taking a proactive approach to monitoring short-term rental websites, identifying illegal. Rentals prior to complaints being filed by neighbors. Proactive sign enforcement and compliance inspections per ordinance. We are supposed to be going around taking photos of all business signs in the township and a lot of times we just don't. Really have time to get around and keep those files up to date. Usually we'll handle it at the renewal stage. We talked about food truck enforcement. A lot of the issues that have been identified by CRPR is the fact that they don't have staff. To really check the parks if we were to be allowing food trucks in the parks, this could be part of that position. He's patrolling the parks already for dogs at large or chinchillas at large, whatever it may be. And then even with all of our plan approvals that have already been done by the board, Toll Brothers, Harner Farm. Pine Hall, Turnberry, the West College Student Housing Project, we're talking about twelve hundred units coming online. Very in the future and all of those units will require additional ordinance enforcement. So we're looking at this in the future. With that in mind for this position. Going to page one seventeen for our department. We've, this year alone, we have handled revised plans for the Toll Brothers Cottage's PRD. That was singular in the budget, it should be plural. That was many amendments. A lot of time for staff has been into the Pine Hall Master Plan Settlement. Now that that is complete, I believe the board signed that in August or September. We've already sat down with representatives from Pine Hall. By the end of October, they're ready to submit and get that first SIP going. West College Student Housing Land Development Plan, Farms to Use Subdivision Plan, the Peace Center Cemetery Plan. We have all the Harner Farm Projects, so Sheets Orchard Square. Mitten Dental Development, the Rogan-Sigmore Subdivision Plan, surprisingly took a lot of staff time. Tussie Tracks Development, that's Center Animal, that was a conditional use and now a land development plan. And JL Farm and Sidery, they are looking at putting an observation deck for more outdoor space for them. Ordnance and draft amendments that we've worked on this year, we've covered the tree preservation protection ordinance. The Heritage and Significant Tree Ordinance, the Family and Childcare Facilities Amendment. The Comprehensive Saldon Zoning Amendments that we are still collecting, I believe the board will be seeing that December sixth. Workforce Housing Ordinance Amendment was also this year. Most of that work was done in twenty twenty. Terrace Streetscape District Ordinance Amendment, that was for the building height. Incentives that were included in those and then the general commercial use. Amendment for the storage facilities to be allowed in general commercial. We've managed four conditional use applications this year. I mentioned them because four doesn't seem like a lot. They actually do take a lot of work on the backend, public hearings, advertising, et cetera. Writing findings of facts, et cetera. Staff spent time working with Pine Hall or the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Committee. And the next steps for implementing the Small Area Plan, we've worked extensively with the Finance Department on. Our escrow accounts and managing them, ensuring that applicants are paying them on. And keeping that fund at a balance that they opened it at. Next year, I would say our biggest project will be the Terrace Streetscape District Rewrite. So we would be looking at. A revised zoning district and design standards for that whole area. An appointed neighborhood steering committee that would include Planning Commission, representation, landowners, Penn State. To assist with that process. We will be, I want to spend this year really beefing up. The Planning and Zoning webpage, I'm looking at having a streamlined application. For all planning and zoning applications and I really want to work with Christina now that we have GIS within planning and zoning. On an active landfillment webpage as opposed to having just a list of. Where our active land development plans are, we can actually get it on a map and see it in context of where they're happening. In twenty twenty-two with meeting with Pine Hall Representation, they're getting ready to submit their SIP. I've already contacted Missy to give her a heads up. We plan on implementing that workforce housing MOU. We will need to have a lot of medians with the board for the programmatic structure to ensure that. The workforce housing, the funds that we are receiving are going to be appropriately managed by that. As always, we will still remain with the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Committee. Providing our expertise and helping them through the process of implementation. See, page one eighteen, starting with salaries, I believe the. Only issue with this one is the ordinance force and salary that is still in as a part-time salary, so. Refer back to two twenty-two for that accurate information for that change. Uniform that is for the ordinance enforcement officer. Four one four two ten, office supplies for planning and zoning. Two forty, general expense, these are miscellaneous expenses that we have. Electronic equipment maintenance, so this is really printing costs for us. Equipment calibration, we're also, we're sending out our noise meter at the end of this year. I believe police are using it. For a event coming up in. This weekend, I believe, and we'll be sending that out to get calibrated. I think it's been about ten years since that's been done. So we want to get that done, make sure it's accurate with its readings. Four one four three ten, this is professional services, so this includes the zoning hearing board solicitor and stenographer. And experts testimonies, so the most recent zoning hearing board case that they'll be hearing in December. We will be having Betsy and Scott Brown or Strongwater Management representing us for this one. So that includes Jeff Stover, his updated hourly rates, estimated twelve meetings for the year. Four hours meeting. Four one four three twenty, we have our communications budget, so that is our cell phone stipends. For PZ staff. Transportation, we pretty much try to use all township vehicles, so it's really just a placeholder. Most of our meetings and whatever our stuff that we had is, they've all been online, so. Haven't had too many issues with that. Four one four three forty, this is advertising for our. All of our ABC meetings that planning and zoning manage, so planning commission, Pine Grove Mills Advisory Committee. Zoning Hearing Board, the conditional uses, all et cetera, rezonings. Not to stay at ten thousand. And then finally, four one four four twenty, do subscriptions, memberships, so this includes. Subscriptions and memberships for planning zoning staff, it also includes seminars for PC and zoning hearing board. Miscellaneous publications that we. Always use and pass out to our ABCs, I think in this past year, past two years really. We've been utilizing PSC's land use webinars and I've gotten permission to, although we've only. Received one signup for that, they have allowed me to share the link with planning commission members. So they have been attending all of those webinars through Penn State. We have our, the National Floodplain Management Conference this year, it's in Orlando, Florida, that's for Jeff. He receives the zoning practice, keep up to date any land use sort of. Regulations law cases that we need to know about. The National Planning Conference, that's in San Diego this year in April, that's for me. Right now, it seems to be in person, the last two years it's been online. And I will say every year they ask us our opinion on, do we like online and? And everyone always says yes because it's cheaper and easier, so I think it's, I think it's going to stick around at least for planners. We have our dues for our planning associations, that is for me and Christina. Zoning Bulletin, same thing, updated law cases for us to stay in touch with what's going on in the nation. We have our APA PA, which is our. Planning for Pennsylvania subscription that we do. That is for me and Christina, the American Plant Association Journal. That is another thing that planning and zoning staff utilize, a lot of articles we will share with planning commission for their review. Fits a topic that we're working on, who is enjoying sharing that with them. My AIC key dues to maintain my certification. And Jeff's dues for the Central PA Safety Association is also included in that this year. We have a regional Laserfish software training and this needs to be updated. We have a new. PZ staff assistant that started recently and I would love to get Shelley involved more in Laserfish. And understanding that process, she'll be a big proponent of the new. Software system that codes will be using Tracer, so I really want her to understand the current programs that we have. And help us move forward with this new software as we get away from UNICEF. Jeff also has in here the Governor's Safety Conference, that's in Hershey every year. The Municipal Administrators Conference that we put in for summer and now it would be Shelley. She has a master's in public administration, if I remember correctly. So I think she would really enjoy that conference. See, and then the APA PA conference for me and Christina, the location is still to be determined at this point in time. And we always have been here planning mission training. Municipal Administrators Management Membership and our Planet Edison subscription, so that was something that Christina had asked for last year. We had signed her up for a few. Courses offered by PSATS and with COVID, they were all canceled. With COVID, they were all canceled, still they have not transitioned to online. Some have, but not the ones that I really want her to get into, they have not been moved over there, so. This is an alternative, it provides her with. Webinars for. Current planning issues, how to review plans, stuff like that, managing the process, planning commission. And. We share an account so that also I can. Utilize the webinars in there to maintain my accreditation with AICP. I'm happy to answer any questions on. Playing zoning's budgets before we get on into CRPA, that's kind of what they give us, so. Can't answer too much about them.
We covered the regional stuff yesterday, or Tuesday. One, if I may make a quick comment, since we had some discussion on the certified playground safety inspector line item. I had a chance to digest it a little bit since Tuesday. I'm recommending that when Jeff's CPSI exam. Is, or is the registration expires, he'll be able to do, as I said, he'll be able to do the inspections in two thousand and twenty-two. But I'm suggesting that that not be re renewed.
That will expire for him in June, I did confirm that, so I think we're working on him doing inspections in the spring. Getting that done for the summer and having the playgrounds ready to go before that expires for him.
So, so he, so it is like a three-year cycle and it is this year that it's expiring, it wasn't.
Year, right, so he'd be able to do his, he'd be able to do his inspections in two thousand and twenty-two. And then we would typically have that renewed for another three-year cycle, but I'm not suggesting we do that. So this won't, it just won't appear in the two thousand and twenty-three, or twenty, yeah, twenty twenty, geez, twenty twenty-three budget.
Wouldn't it appear in the two thousand and twenty-two though, because it expires?
It could, but doesn't have to, I mean, it's, it's because we would do the inspections, like it doesn't need to be maintained throughout the year, we would. In two thousand and twenty-three to be re-upped if we wanted to continue that program.
Okay, so we still could change our mind back and have him do the inspections, but change our mind midstream, okay, great.
Right, it's just, it's just a, an exam and probably some prep material that he would want to purchase in order to do that. Part of the issue, yeah, part of the issue is we do these inspections, we send. Some of the reports, the inspection reports off to the Regional Park Agency and then. That's usually where they sit, I mean, in fact, this year we're still not sure what the status is of a lot of those recommendations. So it's just, it's very.
So you send recommendations over and then you don't get a response?
Very common that we, we do not, either don't get a response, or it's extremely delayed. And we tried to button up some of those inefficiencies, but. Really, they just haven't had a lot of success, so I think it's time that we. We scrapped that, the origin of it was actually a recommendation from our workers' compensation insurance provider, Penn Prime. Our liability insurance, actually they do both, but. And that was done several years ago, quite a few years ago, before my time as manager. But. Everything that I said on Tuesday is true in that they, they won't inspect the ant with the same frequency as Jeff did does, but. Or at least they haven't been. But we could, you know, lean on them a little bit if we need. Periodic inspections, or perhaps we can work something out where they do a section of our parks every year.
Well, I think this, this is a great conversation, because I think that this is part of that. Regional parks governance conversation. And that that's where we really need to be, to be talking with the municipal partners about, about that, because what we really want is for. All of the parks in the region to be properly inspected and maintained. And if that, if that doesn't happen through CRPR, that's okay. But then we all can bear the burden of that as municipalities and then it's clear, so I appreciate this dialogue and I appreciate you. All checking up on that, so you can inform us about that policy, thank you.
I think that's it for planning until we get to Fund Thirty Capital Reserve. It'll be with no other questions, the Dave Modricar Show for quite some time. And I'll turn the floor over to. Him.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Actually, I do have one question. So that, so I'm going back to the PGM SAP money and the Northland money. So that Northland money, because it's capital investment, is in Public Works. Because it would be about that kind of an investment. But, but I don't know why I remembered it as planning, but.
Planning, that's correct, yeah. Correctly, yeah.
But did I, I'm sorry, I had some kind of distraction here at home, did we go over that then, when we just did planning?
Nope, that, that'll fall under capital reserve, so we'll.
I'm not up to speed in my own brain, okay, all right, then I don't have any holdup, please, Dave Modricar, take the floor.
Okay, my, my question was, do folks need to stretch their legs, or are we ready to jump into it?
I'm jumping in.
All right. The other thing, I, if you'd like, I'll share my screen whenever you'd like, but apparently it's, it's working well without, so I'll just continue in that. Format, whenever you want me to, I will. So engineering's on page eighty-nine, or if you're using your bookmarks, it's Fund O-one. And then it's called Public Works Engineering. So I'll get started, page eighty-nine starts with an org chart. I'd like to just spend a few moments here, because a few moments spent here will make sense later on. So, in our organization, administrative assistant. Township engineering section, township engineer, the assistant township engineer who works primarily on capital projects. The engineering technician that does design, surveying and inspection. And our GIS technician that serves all of our departments. New next year, stormwater engineer is requested, you'll see that in Fund Twenty. And then in future years, you'll see a request for the stormwater workers. That's consistent with the level of service plan that was presented for the stormwater. Fee. Then under road and fleet, we have a road superintendent, two foremen, twelve road crew. One vacancy there that, that we know will be filled in the future. And as is typical every year, we hire seasonal workers. Shop foreman, mechanic and another mechanic, we do have a. Student through the program with State College Area High School. That does work for us and you'll see that listed in part-time wages. Under the street care section. We have an arborist position that's currently vacant, but we hope that will be filled in February. In two thousand and twenty, we're requesting a municipal tree trimmer. If you look back, you'll notice that that's been in the, in the org chart and CIP for some time. And then there's a future tree trimmer out in the future. Then also, in the building and ground section, a request for the building and ground superintendent this year. That individual has other duties too, including asset management, PA one call. Traffic signal maintenance. You'll see it in the narrative, I, when we get to the salaries, you'll notice I failed to put a line item in for that salary, so. I'm going to ask the board to consider that. A day custodian, a night custodian, the other thing you'll see is that halfway through next year, we're requesting that that. Night custodian who works half for the township and half for cog, be full-time for the township. Why in July? Because that gives cog adequate time to make adjustments on their end for staffing. So, a pause there and then I'll. Continue into the mission statement, the public works goals. I'm not going to read all of this, but I'm going to try to stop where I want to highlight a few things. There's a narrative at the bottom of page eighty-nine that, you know, provides the narrative of what that. Full-time stormwater engineer will do, as I noted, there, we do have a part-time position, that's been vacant most of this year. So that, that's, that's a void that we're really hoping to fill. You'll notice also when we get to staff salaries, that we have one GIS technician, there was a time when we had to. And this year, based on workload, we're asking for a part-time assistant to, to help the GIS technician. So continuing on page ninety is your typical list of duties and responsibilities. Accomplishments for the engineering section. We have examples of significant projects. And accomplishments in two thousand and twenty-two, it continues on to page ninety-one. One of the most significant of those was the, after the adoption of the stormwater. Fee was the implementation phase of that and what all that entailed. Most of these projects you're, you're familiar with, because they're updated in my reports to the board. Then on page ninety-two, new for the, new for two thousand and twenty-two. You know, the following projects, we don't have to spend a lot of detail now, because those will all. Be found under the TIF or later in the budget where you'll be, you know, asked to reaffirm them or make adjustments as you see fit. Onto page ninety-three, we start with salaries. Just a reminder that some of the salary funding is in. Funded twenty. To reflect the fact that some of the. Labor hours are dedicated to stormwater-related activities. So, four oh eight one one five, this is the first time we see something new. So two part-time. Folks to assist with capital project inspection. As you know, our paving program was deferred this year, with a pretty significant program. So this would really pick up two part-time folks, ideally. College students, you know, from the program of engineering, they've worked out well. In that capacity, just because of their knowledge, skills and abilities. To serve as, as inspectors on projects. Part-time GIS technician, and again, ideally, a college student. That would be able to work. Forty hours during the summer and then part-time throughout the school year. Nothing significant in office supplies. PPE, which is personal protective equipment. General expenses. Equipment maintenance. Electronic equipment maintenance. Engineering, project surveys and drawings, we're fortunate to have very, you know, skilled individuals and we, and. Appreciate the fact that we have them. In years past, you may have seen money there to do surveying, we do most of it in-house, we do have some funding there in the event that we need to set right away pins. And we may need to hire somebody if we can't find them. That's what that funding is for. Under engineering specialties, sometimes we need the assistance of an outside engineer for some specialized activities. That's what this fund allows. Communications, no real change there. Transportation, very minimal, not seldom used, not. Very minimal period, seldom used. Advertising and printing. Not much change there. Job vacancies, sealed, sealed bids, advertising for equipment sales. Do subscriptions, memberships, for the second year in a row, most of staff has not traveled to any. Training, and that's why you see those actual numbers in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one are reduced. Requesting the same level of funding as we have in past years with the anticipation that some of us may be able to get to some. In-person events in two thousand and twenty-two. And the future of it, you know, I agree with some other folks have stated, there, there's. There's definitely benefit to doing things in person, as you understand, but there's also. A movement toward doing it remotely and it's efficient, and so that I expect will continue for those venues that offer it. We have one individual, the GIS technician, who's working on his masters. Of graphic information systems through Penn State World Campus, and again, request funding reimbursement for. I believe it's fifty percent is the way our personnel manual is written. Nothing planned for an office equipment, just kind of a placeholder, and that brings me to the end of O one four oh eight engineering. Whenever you'd like, I can move on to four oh nine.
I just have a question about the, the education, does, does that have an obligation to stay with us as well? Kind of like with the police officer?
I don't believe so.
Is there any requirement in terms of, I, I mean, I guess they would have to go part-time. So it would be, because they're going, they're working full-time, so they are going on a part-time basis to school?
Oh, yeah, he's, he's working his full, you know, forty-hour salaried work week. And then he's putting in his study time. I believe on his own time. Yeah, so he's doing it part-time, if that was your question, yes. Yes, yes.
Lisa, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, I was just trying to refer back to the CIP, so. And seeing, and just trying to match some, some things up, so the two. Halftime engineers and the part-time GIS. What were they under?
I don't know that they were in the CIP, Lisa.
Okay, so this is new.
It probably is, yes.
Okay, so I'm not losing my mind totally, I didn't remember them being here and I was looking, okay.
Now, I apologize for, for not mentioning that.
That's okay, I just, I want, this is something I'd like to go back and reevaluate, because that's one and a half employees then, because we already have. Because there's going to be a full-time stormwater engineer too, right, because there was, okay.
So the stormwater engineer is a half-time going full-time, we've already, we already have the budget in two thousand and twenty-one reflects point five FTE, and so that's. Bringing that individual on full-time, well, it'd be a new hire.
Right, okay, and then, right, that's a new hire, okay, maybe that's why I was thinking about that, and then the custodian goes to full-time, or. Gets split.
Yeah, that would be a, that would, in all likelihood, if the board approves it, and we could talk about that. Presumably later, along with the ordinance enforcement officer position, get a sense of what the board wants to do with those two positions. If it would be an internal promotion, it would just kind of be a domino effect, we, there's one candidate that we think would likely be interested in the position. So if we move that individual to this role, we'd have to backfill their role. And then that would just kind of be a, a new hire at the, at, at, at a, more of a like rank and file level, more of a. Like a reduced salary, but, so there'd be a net effect on the budget, is really what I'm trying to say. The difference in salaries as we shuffle folks around, but it would be a new staff person, so you would be adding one. New full-time equivalent if you authorize that position in two thousand and twenty-two.
Right, okay, so if we could put on the list to come back to those three part-time positions.
Yep, can do.
Right, looks like that's it for questions. For this part.
Okay, four oh nine is on page ninety-seven. Again, very similar mission statement, goals. In general, is a little narrative regarding the custodians. And the requested building and ground superintendent. However, in four oh nine. One, one, probably a new number, we don't have building and superintendent salary reflected. It does reflect. The movement of a custodian. To a forty-hour status. Starting in July. Very little custodian over time, but there's a line item in the event that we need it. Operating supplies, very similar, slight, slight. Bump there requested. But close to flat line. In terms of what we spent this year. Cleaning equipment, the same. PPE, the same. Repairs, maintenance contracted services, I've tried to outline. Those services. I do have a slight increase projected. Under each of the services I've listed. For most of them, I've listed the vendor that provides. The service for us. And what typically what the annual. Cost is for that service. For the emergency generator transfer switch, we will now have. Two of those as opposed to one. So we've added. You know, our second generator set. If you see U S T I F anywhere, that's our underground storage tank. Capacity fee. It's basically a tax for underground storage tanks.
All the way at the bottom right, last, so.
Yeah. Electricity, we'll know a little better. If we're able to maintain that, that assumes that we have a. Net zero. Cost for electric use on building six, which I believe we will. With the installation of the solar arrays. And if anybody wants to see them sometime and you're okay climbing up a ladder. It's, it's impressive when you, when you get up close and take a look at them. Just let me know. Heat, very similar. Water consumption. There is an increase projected with the use of water in the new building, including our. Car wash system, we will. Keep an eye on that. Right now, we have some water consumption issues going on that we're trying to get a handle on. Not a hundred percent sure if it's metering. Accuracy, so we're working on that. Here's where you see. The shredding as well as the refuse and recycling. So we've entered into a new contract with Bergmeyer. We're having difficulty with our with our previous provider. And that gets us to the end of four oh nine.
Hey, I have a question. With the new solar panels, are we going to be paying anything toward those, like a lease? Or or any kind of payment?
No, the the only thing we might entertain in some future years, if we think we need a. And you know, an annual PM contract. You know, if not, it's just call when we have issues. Should be monitored through the building automation system. Cleanings. You know, rather routine, so it. It it couple of years of of.
Potentially, we could save electricity this year. We should, actually.
Yeah, it it's gonna, it should go online about a month and start spinning the meter backwards.
Yeah, so next year we'll save some money.
Yeah, you'll. Yeah.
That line item may be close to zero for for building six electricity.
Right.
But of course.
It should be, for next year. Yeah.
I have a question, Dave. Who installed those, I'm just curious.
Infinity.
Okay. And how many, how many do you have?
Ooh.
How many panels?
Quick facts.
Several.
A bunch, a big bunch.
Now, there's, there's a couple hundred. A hundred.
Really?
Thousand. Eight thousand. Divided by four hundred and fifty. Two hundred and forty panels.
Forty.
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty panels, four hundred and fifty watts a panel. A hundred and eight thousand kilowatt. Generation.
For comparison, that's about, it's a little over a fifth of our total electricity usage for the township in a year.
Wow. Okay, so it's two hundred and forty, I just wanted to get that down, two hundred and forty panels.
Right.
And they they each are what, four hundred, did you say?
Four hundred and fifty watts.
Four hundred and fifty watts.
I have a little quick fact sheet I give for tours, I can send it to you.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
And if you're daring, we can take you up on the roof, there's a little bit of a, there's a, there's a ladder, but.
Somebody would have to haul me.
Ah, we can.
I would love to see it, but.
Think they have a bucket truck, be careful, Pam, what you ask for. Get that grappler hook or something.
Seriously. If you wanted to go up in a in a bucket, you know, you could go off to the. It's it's a literal bucket truck, it's made to go up in the air like that, you could go up.
So you could put me in a high lifter and take me up there to see it?
Next year, yeah, we don't have it right now, but it's. Approve it.
That's definitely staying in the budget now, we're all going for riding the bucket truck next year.
Next time you have it, let me know.
Yeah, the one we have now is broke.
Oh. Okay, well, let me know when we can do it. Thanks.
I don't think we have it anymore, Dave, I think we sold it.
We had was broke, thank you.
That was a pretty good move there, Dave, to guarantee you get approval on that one.
Boy.
Be careful, there's going to be an ad taken out in the Gazette next month.
Yeah.
All right, back on track, where are we at?
Maintenance on the agenda, page one twenty. In your book, if you're on your bookmarks, it's oh, one, and then it says Public Works Roads. So on page one twenty-six, it's titled four twenty-six dash four thirty-nine Public Works. All right, so we'll get started on there. Once again. Some mission and message. I try to tie it to the strategic plan, I should have mentioned this earlier. It's in italics wherever I've tried to. You know, mention something in our budget. That ties into the strategic plan. The list of accomplishments for two thousand and twenty-one. And then a calendar of. Planned events in general for two thousand and twenty-two. All right, four twenty-six recycling, four twenty-six, three sixty-eight on page one twenty-nine. There you see a. Drastic change, and that is a reflection. Of State College Borough performing. A audit of the cost of their. Recycling and composting. Services at their facility. And in turn. Indication from them on what they plan on billing. All the partnering municipalities in the next year.
Whoa, I think we've just tipped the scale in favor of considering something different. That's just my thought, we've been watching this number for a long time because this, let me make sure I'm not confused first. This is that whole like Hawbaker thing where we pay them and then they charge people. For the compost, but it's like, it's actually a State College Borough thing, but somehow Hogbaker's involved, right, isn't this that whole program?
Yes, it is the Borough's program. Their land in Patton Township. So the Borough owns it. And they have an agreement with Hawbaker, the best I understand it. Hawbaker. Runs the Scale House. And the facility, and in turn, I believe they dump their clean fill there. The Borough still. Runs the. Equipment that turns the leaf piles and turns stuff into mulch. And. The Borough would still have equipment there like. The, I think they plan on buying. A tub grinder, right now they. Bring it in on a rental. So, yes, that's the program we're talking about.
And just to be, they, the, the, my conversation with the Borough manager, he said that the, that Hawbaker is not affiliated with the compost program. The arrangements that Dave described are. And that's, that's from the the Borough manager are not related to to this specific program. It did go up significantly, we, you know, grilled them pretty hard on it. They had a pretty comprehensive assessment done to support. Their costs, and in short, it really is just a matter of, I think, as Dave said, the, the, the kinds of material that they're being provided with. I do think we should look in at at some alternatives and see what else is out there. I think it's going to be difficult for us to be able to maintain our operations at even at a lower rate than the eighty-five. That's in the budget, we're talking about buying land, tub grinder. Equipment to turn the compost, they're called scarabs, they're these big. You know, kind of triangular looking vehicles. And and then, of course, operators, I think it'll be, it'll be significantly more, but we should look at what else is out there, I don't disagree.
Thanks, I I have it on my big list of things to come back to later in the year. So I I don't want to take up too much of our time right now, but. I think this also kind of coincides with that question, I know that. Dave Modricar, you all have been working in. Public Works to get even more refined data collection happening. So we can really get better numbers in terms of cost per service provided. And I guess kind of like tracking that cost of leaf collection and then adding it into this cost of leaf. Disposal or churning or earning or whatever it is that's happening there. I mean, it really significantly increases the cost of providing that service. In one fell swoop for that, for that to increase so much, so. I guess, I don't know, I guess I am thankful that you've been working on that project, so we can really kind of start to wrap our minds around it, because. You know, when I look at all the services that the township provides. Like, there's some that. No matter what we do as as property owners or renters, no matter what we do, we can't really. Put a dent in the cost of that service provision, like, we are not going to go out and shovel the snow off the roads. However, the idea of people being more responsible about managing their leaves on their property. I think that if we can show them the cost involved with that program. And help empower them to be able to reduce costs, like, this might be an area that we can do that in, I don't know.
I I have a question, if this, if this is going to increase this much. Would they consider taking garden waste as well? Because right now. We have a lot of gardens. And they used to, they used to take it, and at some point a few years ago, we got this big. Green paint X on it and then noticing no more garden waste. Leaves only and and sticks, I think, that's all we can put out.
Yeah, that might be.
It won't take like weeds.
That might be a function of our processing and pickup equipment, I think if you brought that material to this. Site, they would probably accept it.
That's what we have to do, yeah, so we have. Loaded up in the car and take it over there, which.
Yeah, there's some things that they that they don't accept because they have a hard time processing it into, you know, the mulch that they're making. But to the extent that our equipment will pick it up, we we do. But when it can't, then you have to bring it to the facility itself.
It just seems, I don't know, I mean, we have. Our own compost, in fact, we have two piles now, but. We just can't, we can't, we can't do all the weeds and stuff.
Yeah, I I really, my hope was that when the curbside organics collection.
Yeah.
It would handle this material, but then. I guess Pam Adams presented that when they looked at that compared to whatever it was, the greenhouse gas. Net, it didn't make as much sense, so then that kind of fell by the wayside too.
Well, I wonder if they compared all the. Single unit people driving their stuff out, you know, I mean. Wonder what was considered in the greenhouse gas.
Yeah.
Get about stuff, you know, like everybody, all all these individual people driving their stuff out there, that's something that should be added into the equation.
I think there's renewed interest, Pam, in relooking at that, that particular thing, the composting, there's like. People really do want it, and so. You know how we had made that comment, we were like, if it makes sense, could we think about that again? I can't remember what meeting I went to after that, there was an affirmation. That that is something that they're looking at, I think they're looking at different system designs. Like in terms of what you're saying, like. Can there be centrally located drop spots, like, just trying to try to do something about that, so. I I think there's still some energy around that.
And and also, you know, kitchen waste added into that would really reduce landfill. So, I mean, there's a lot, it's, you know, there's lots of different threads in there.
I think it's in some future time, if you were. Talking about. You know, looking at alternatives to disposal at the Borough for the eighty-five thousand. You're probably going to want to consider putting money in a budget for consultant study. I was, I was able to get grant money when we looked at this maybe fifteen years ago. And we we did a study through, you know, that was funded fully through grant. And at that time, it was like a five thousand dollar grant, now it would be significantly more than that to do that kind of a study.
Well, maybe that's something we should consider too. There may be some new methods out there now too that weren't there then. Thank you.
So you want me to move on to four thirty? Public Works Admin. Uniform Service. Remains the same. We didn't spend as much because we had some, I think, some vacant positions, we weren't wearing as many uniforms. Office supplies, really. The road crew uses supplies from the engineering section, so we we just. Remains a zero. Gasoline, you heard Chief talk about this. The estimate is for two fifty a gallon. We did get one more fuel dump since, you know, I wrote, wrote this narrative. We know it's going up here toward Thanksgiving, then it's going to probably drop off, so really, it's kind of a prediction of where we think it's going to be. On an average for all of next year, so. To date, my estimates haven't been that bad, sometimes the board, you know, adjusts that ten or twenty cents, whatever you want to do. Is fine, and the other thing Chief mentioned is. With with our new fueling system, we hopefully will have a. Little bit more accurate reflection of how much we're consuming, it's not going to change the budget number because, you know, we we know how much we're spending. And we get large drops, so if we get a drop at the end of the year, beginning of the year, that can swing things too. So same for diesel. Oil, aluminum fuels, we buy in bulk. I put a little bit more detail in this year's narrative as to what that includes. There was a large purchase to fill up the bulk tanks in the new. There was a large purchase to fill up the bulk tanks in the new building. That's why you saw that high price this year, but I'm hoping it remains, you know, closer to the ten thousand a year for that item. PPE remains steady. General expenses, you can see in the narrative what's involved there. Once again, pretty, pretty steady. Well, down from twenty twenty, but, but hopefully remaining around that fifteen thousand range. Electronic equipment maintenance, really that's believe it's copiers, right? It's not radios. Small tools and equipment. This would be for the road crew. I think the reason you see that number higher is we did buy a number of battery operated pieces of equipment this year. And so there was some one-time purchases. They were less than twenty-five hundred. They came out of this account, not capital. But we have moved to an electric. I think we have one electric push mower, one electric weed whacker. And we do now have electric leaf blowers. Electric, I'm sorry, battery. Battery operator is what I'm trying to say. Communications. This is reimbursement for cell phones. I think that number has a slight bump perhaps because of where we think this is going to be with our bargaining agreement with the union. Radio maintenance.
Ava, let me just jump in. I, and I think a lot of these accounts are in flux depending on what the, at least that pertained to compensation, benefits, enhancements, uniforms, other things. So after the negotiation of the bargaining agreement, which will likely be in effect at some point in twenty twenty-two, we'll revisit this. If we have to, if we're close, we may just let it lie. If we have to make any changes, we'll, we'll come back to the board, but that's sort of an overarching comment that applies to all the expenditure items that apply to the bargaining unit members.
Radio maintenance, we're, we're anticipating slight increases as the radios age. Equipment rentals. That's varied over the years depending what we're renting, but I think we've got our best estimate moving forward for twenty twenty-two. These subscriptions, memberships. You can see the actual numbers and the projected are much lower than what's budgeted. But again, hopeful that some of the opportunities will exist for in-person training. But some will commit, continue remote. I would like the road superintendent to be able to attend our snow conference. It's a national conference sponsored by APWA. It's actually being hosted here in Pennsylvania. So they're looking for volunteers. It doesn't get him any discount, but it's a great training opportunity. And it's close to home. So some of those travel expenses are reduced. Contracted services, not a lot there. Office equipment. Once again, placeholder. Chemicals and supplies, most of that is paid for out of our liquid fuels. General expenses, once again, a miscellaneous account. Repairs and maintenance. So, yeah, this fund is predominantly for snow plow edge blades. And I, I will say that the, the superintendent and the crew are asking to, to start looking at carbide blades or another specialty blade. They last longer. They cost more upfront. So I told them, you know, we can start buying, you know, outfitting a plower to next year. Let's see how it's working for us. You know, I tried to level out these kind of budgets, even though maybe you buy something that costs more and lasts two or three or four years. But anyway, for next year, I'm, I'm projecting it the same. Contracted snow removal. Very similar to previous years. I don't believe we added any new roads to that program. Street signs and, and supplies, barricades count. So it's work zone as well as our street signs and traffic control devices.
Dave Modricar, I have a question about snow removal that I'm just going to throw in now because of the contract question or budget entry. But my question relates to park, park parking lots. So I know that CRPR just doesn't do it, like it's just not part of the conversation. Despite the fact that they're always talking about how winter recreation is really important and nobody can winter recreate. And in fact, I hear from many residents of the same thing, like I know winter recreation is a huge unmet desire, but like a huge barrier would be taken down by, for most people if we just plowed our park parking lots. But I, I realize that that's not like just a small thing. So I don't expect any kind of answers right now. And it's on my big list of things that we can maybe talk about this year. But I know for sure it would fall to us, not CRPR. At least right now how things are. So if we wanted to do that, would it take the kind of truck that's used in these contracted services? Or would it be the kind of truck that our public works folks drive?
The, the contracted services trucks could easily take care of it. Our smaller public works trucks could, could do it also. Our, our big trucks might not be as nimble, you know, but, but we Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's good food for thought. We'll leave it at that right now. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the contracted trucks could, could do it if that was your question.
I guess immediately my, where my brain went with that is the reason why CRPR talks about not being able to do it is because they don't have plow equipment. But what I just heard in your answer is that the plow equipment that we use on our roads isn't really the same equipment that we would use in the parks. And we would probably contract that service. So if we would contract that service, CRPR also could contract that service. So we'll just, we'll put that in the pot and let it stir, stew around a little bit. All right. That's, thank you. Thank you much.
Traffic signal charges relatively flat. Signal repair, parts and labor is the same. We will bring, we plan on bringing two new signals on, online next year. So maybe in the following year, you'll probably see a little bit more electric consumption and eventually a little bit more in the parts and labor, but not, certainly not immediately. And that brings us to four thirty-seven. I think we're Yeah.
Can I ask one quick question about the school zone flasher? One school zone flasher. So we only have a school zone flasher at Ferguson and we don't have one at Radio Park. Did we talk about putting one or what are the, what's the reason we don't have one there?
I think it has to be warranted to begin with.
Oh, it does. Okay.
Yeah. And then they get to get permitted by PennDOT. So they're, they're permitted just like a traffic signal is permitted.
Brother.
So we would, we would have to do a study. And I, I mean, that flasher's been here longer than I've been here in Pine Grove. So that, you know, that study was done at some point in time, knowing that there were walkers, you know, across the road. Maybe it was oppressed by this, by the elementary school. I'm not certain how it got started.
So maybe something to pursue with the school district if, if we want to go down that road too, and they can partner.
I would think that typically that would be the requesting agency and then would probably follow up on it from there.
Okay, thank you.
Four thirty-seven, we get into mechanic salaries. And you see the part-time wages. So we have a helper through the, through the State College Area School District. That's usually maybe a junior in high school and then a senior sometimes are with us for, you know, for two years sometimes. Once again, PPE. Small tools, as we purchases less than two thousand five hundred. Something like a scan tool that costs four thousand dollars. You'll, you'll see that in the capital. Repair for vehicle, vehicle maintenance repairs, parts. You know, that's one of our, our larger cost centers. Because that's where most mechanics spend their time doing work on the vehicles. Outside repairs are limited, but there are times when we need to send pieces of equipment out for repair. Examples are listed there in the narrative. These membership subscriptions. Very similar to past years. I think there might have been a small bump there for the online purchase of troubleshooting, troubleshooting guides. And then we get to four thirty-eight. All right, four thirty-eight. Again, we start with salaries, a portion of which is prorated to fund twenty. As Dave mentioned, road crew wages. Might be a better word than salaries is an estimate. Here's the part-time help that we typically hire every year or try to hire seldom do we actually fill all those positions or keep them as long as we like. And you can see that reflected in the actual numbers for twenty twenty and the projected numbers for twenty twenty-one. I don't even look for part-time winter help anymore because it, it doesn't exist. An, an increase in overtime as, as reflected in the narrative and as articulated by Dave earlier for that, for that same reason. We do have some supply expenses that are not liquid fuels. And so they are in this fund rather than Fund Thirty-Five, the liquid fuels fund. And that brings us to the end of that section. So I think that moves us on to street trees.
David, I have a quick question. No, it's okay. I'm just throwing it in in maintenance. It probably actually doesn't belong there, but it probably doesn't matter. So I attended, as Dave mentioned, the PML Sustainability Conference. And one of the sessions I attended was, I think perhaps it was called Beyond Pesticides. I'm not sure. But like managing public lands for pollinator and human health and safety, I guess, would be a good synopsis of that. And so I learned about a new piece, a piece of equipment that is new to me. And that is a steam weed killer, steam. The steam kills the weed. And I thought, wow, wow, this is a fantastic option. Not again for us, but in theory to do playground weed killing. If in theory this body wanted to move toward a like an ecocide free park management kind of a scenario. This, this, this piece of equipment seems like it would be invaluable. So my question is, do you, do we have one of these in Ferguson Township? Because I know we also kill weeds in cracks. So do we have one? And if we don't, do you have any experience with them? And would that be something that, again, we haven't moved in that direction yet, but if we as a township did move in that direction, would that be a, a good tool in that, in that direction move?
Yes. Interesting. I don't have experience with it. We don't own one. And I wrote down a note and I'd be interested in looking into it.
Thank you. Now you can move on if there's no other questions.
Okay. Yeah. So we're going to go to street trees. We're going to go to something green. So it's page one forty-two. Or your bookmark called Public Works Street Trees. So this is section four fifty-five. Again, starts out with a, a mission and a message. We talk about accomplishments and some of the things we have in italics to try to tie into the strategic plan. I think we did fairly well for ourselves despite our arborist vacancy that we've struggled filling. And I'm be very happy when it's filled in February of next year. But we have moved along with accomplishments that we've performed either, you know, with, with current staff or assistance from our part-time arborist. Well, now Sam helped us out or at times when we lean on Bartlett Tree Experts. So here we have funding in four fifty-five, one, one, four for the arborist and municipal tree specialist for next year. Part-time wages include a seasonal worker to assist that crew in the summer when we would be doing pretty much of our extensive tree trimming, tree care and watering.
I have just one quick question. You had said that the arborist will be coming on in February. Does that mean somebody's already been hired?
It means we made an offer and they accepted. And I'll need to see if he shows up.
And great.
I'm hoping he does because I, I think he'd be a great asset to the urban tree program. And I'd love to talk him up, but that's probably not the appropriate time. But yes. Operating supplies, then probably the remainder of the items are rather small. And I can answer any questions you might have on them. But I'm probably going to move down the page to well, we always talk about dues subscriptions and training. So, so that does include some funding there for the, for the arborist and the municipal tree specialist to maintain their certifications, you know, gain expertise in the, in the areas that they practice. And you can see we didn't spend much of anything this year and not a whole lot the year before. So contracted services is where we should, should spend a few, a few moments. Stump removal, we, we do in-house. We don't contract that out now. Tree injections. Next year, I'm anticipating that we will need to do some tree injection. Um, next year I'm anticipating that we will need to do uh some tree injections for, for uh, for the Emerald Ash Bore. For those ash trees that remain. We have funding requested for oak well, in the event that we have to mitigate oak well. And we were fortunate this year that we don't have any confirmed cases. The large tree removal is for hazards and for oak well. Or other pest abatement and mostly tied to the oak well mitigation is what we've seen in the past. Um, but again, you can see what we're projecting this year. So we really didn't have to tap into that much at all. The pruning contract that is an annual contract. This year we're pruning uh nine hundred trees. Um, I do eight hundred trees listed, so that's what we'll, you know, shoot for next year. The tree inventory is a new item. Uh, we have not done an inventory. Since twenty thirteen. Um, I feel there's a great benefit to do an inventory. I believe the tree commission supports that. When I spoke to them. I believe our incoming arborist will benefit from it and it will help us with uh management in the future. I don't anticipate we would do another one. Any sooner than five years. Um, and if we have the capability, which we may. Um, with the tools that we have and the tracer and the asset management system, you know, we could perhaps. Um, not do one again in the future. That's kind of what we hoped or the arborist had hoped years ago, and it just didn't come to fruition. And we really have an outdated uh inventory. Um, and I'm suggesting that we do another tree inventory.
Question about that, Dave. Uh, is there enough money uh budgeted to uh include? Uh, our park non, non-clumped, like, right? Not like every clump of trees in every park, but the individual intentionally planted trees. Is there enough money in that budget for that inventory to include them? Because I know in the past they weren't included in our inventory. And I would bet that we have quite, quite the investment in those, those park trees. Um, so I'm wondering, is there enough money in that budget to, to include them in that inventory this time? And if not, can we consider increasing that to, to, to inventory that asset?
There. There may be. Um. And certainly we could, I could either try to estimate what it would be to add. Or we could put it out to bid for the street trees with an alternate to do all the park trees if we have the funding also.
That'd be great. Could we, could we do it like that? Could we do the alternate and then make, make the decision if we have enough money?
We, we could and if I'm told to, I will.
Can we tell you late, is it, can we, do we have enough justification to move forward now with that as our idea? Or do you want everybody's head to nod or shake?
I just think they do it.
Then Dave Probalca, do you want us right now to? Uh, it would just be as an alternate, so we wouldn't, we would just be asking to put that in as an alternate. And then consider the cost uh and decide if we want to move forward at that time.
Yeah, that sounds fine. Uh, the only question is, is that amount right? And I guess we'll, we'll figure that out if it comes back as forty thousand for the street trees. And then another ten, fifteen thousand for the parks, just throwing numbers out, of course. Then that'll be a decision that the board would have to make when deciding toward the contract in the context of the rest of the budget and.
Great.
All those other factors.
Yeah, we, we, we can make the street trees the base bid and the basis of award. And then we can have the alternate for the park trees if you'd like.
Thank you. Perfect, perfect.
So ended four fifty-five. And the next item is stormwater fund, page one sixty-one. Or fund twenty, if you're following along in your bookmarks that Eric made for us. So fun twenty was created last year, so we're following that same uh format. So in fund twenty, there's revenue. Do you want me to talk about that or do you want to talk about it, Eric?
Actually, maybe I'll jump in. So none of the above on revenue. Um, just a couple of things to, to maybe call attention to. Of course, we have the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funding. That is both the combination of uh the NIFWIF, National Fish and Wildlife Funding. And then a grant that we're waiting on an award for two hundred and fifty thousand from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Um, and I don't believe we've heard, I presumably somebody would have told me if we would have heard about that. So I'm, I'm hopeful that that's the case. Um, and so that's of course the big, the big um chunk of, of the Park Hills Drainage Way project they able to talk about in the expenditures. Don't get that grant. Uh, we'll certainly uh inform the board and then make a decision as to how to proceed from there. Uh, stormwater fee revenue is of course the big ticket item, at least that's been subject to the most um. Attention and uh we, we've refined those numbers quite a bit uh based on what our preliminary estimates. We had a, a, a communication from a resident saying, why is it so different? Well, it's different because we now have a much better idea of what that, that income is going to be from that fee. We know what our total number of equivalent residential units uh will be that are assessed throughout the township. We know the value of the credits and exemptions that have been processed, thanks to the diligent work of Dave Modricar, Eric Anderson, Ron Seibert, James Progar. Probably worked from some others too that I'm, and, and that Al, I'll just say. Uh, so we, we're really doing a much better job honing in on what that figure is. And that's that one point three six million. So that's what we expect to receive, assuming that the board sets the uh fees, the per ERU. Which you'll do, you'll be asked to do on December thirteenth at the hundred and nineteen dollars per uh ERU for inside the growth boundary properties. Seventy-five dollars per ERU outside the growth boundary. Um, so I'll pause for any questions on the fee methodology calculation, anything like that. Yeah.
So the credits are taken out in that, yeah. Okay.
That's right. That is net of credits and exemptions. Uh, based on, on our current understanding. I would say the big, th- there's an appeal period that's in process right now and, or, or there's an, which is for the exemptions. Next year, there's an appeal process for the credits that are baked in, right? Am I right about that, Dave? After the, uh, in, in April, when they get their tax bill, they can appeal any credit uh miscalculations that they may see, but it's a narrow focus. So there's, those appeals aren't worked in because we don't know what those figures are gonna be yet. But I have no reason to think that they're gonna have any meaningful impact on what that final number is.
Okay, so that's the net as we know it. And then do, for the, for this fund, does it, does the uh subtraction of those credits and exemptions, does that have to be made up?
Um, well, not necessarily, but. It could be. I mean, if, and, and it's really, it's really a function of the authorized expenditures more than anything. Of course, if your expenditures uh are equal to or less than the income net of the credits and exemptions. Then no, there's, there's no supplement that has to be made. But if your expenditures exceed those and fund balance can't cover it, of course, like any other, any other governmental fund. Uh, then yeah, that, that would have to be supplemented through transfers from the general fund. And you have, we have two sources of inter-fund transfers that you'll see in the next line items uh that I can talk about that address. That, that supplemental income that's needed in order to make the expenditures whole based on how they're presented. Uh, and also cover the township's obligation for the stormwater fee because we have a, a fee as well, just as everybody else does.
Okay, but there's no, there's no requirement that we backfill that loss into the fund.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to check. Okay, thanks.
I have a quick question. I'm just curious, the number of people um that applied for credits, like the percentage.
Six hundred and fifty?
Six hundred and fifty people applied?
Or six hundred and five? I. One of those two are six hundred and five.
Six hundred and something out of about how many?
Nineteen thousand.
Well, parcels about eight thousand.
Okay, good point.
Yeah, it's less than ten percent. Now, the, the question that you asked. Was a structural BMP credit. So then there were about another thirty structural. So let's, let's round that off at six fifty. And then that doesn't include the exemption. So Eric would have a better count on the exemptions because he processed those.
Yeah, we got a lot of agricultural exemption requests. Um, when I say a lot. Fifty to a hundred.
So maybe seven hundred and fifty? The credits that I would have processed would have included like nutrient management, ENS, conservation plan, credits for the farmers. So when you take everything into account, we had maybe seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty total applications for everything. The nonprofit, that financial hardship. Yeah.
May seem low, but I'll tell you, compared to other communities, that's a pretty impressive number. Um, I think what we were hearing from our consultant uh with her experience in other municipalities, she was quoting about one percent.
Oh, wow.
So, so really I think that's credit to the board and the staffer that, that have led this, getting the word out, the exemptions that you've approved. Um, I, I know when you say ten percent, it kind of seems like, oh, that's really not that much. But I can assure you that compared to other communities, it's a pretty significant factor or figure.
And, and Penn State, is Penn State's revenue factored in here?
So yeah, so I can tell, tell you a little bit about that. Um, it seems like Penn State and the township, at least the way we've talked about this. And so this is just me as manager, working with the university and not suggesting anything to the board. But I think we've been, been able to come to a tentative agreement, tentative pending their approval and, and yours as well. Uh, and it really does not give the university any special consideration that they would not otherwise be entitled to with the credits and exemptions that are applicable to anybody. So their fee is going to be, which is factored into this number, based on the proposed, uh, the, the proposed tentative agreement, about forty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So uh, that's, so just the, the, the last two things on, I already touched on the inter-fund transfers. Actually, I guess that's all I wanted to say. We, we're, we're proposing some money. And we talked about inter-fund transfers on Tuesday, but just to reiterate, some money be transferred from the general fund. That's uh covers our obligation for the fee. It also uh ensures that we can meet those uh expenditures as they're presented. If you'll refer back to the summary page, you'll see that. Uh, proposed uh revenue and expenditures as presented will result in about a twenty-nine, just around thirty thousand dollar fund balance at the end of the year. Well below our thirty percent cap, uh nowhere close to that, of course, a, a very small percentage. And it gives us a little buffer for overages, but it's, we, we tried hard not to be. Too um greedy, I guess, maybe is, is not the best way to describe it. In that we didn't want to build a huge fund balance. We, we tried to really be as close to neutral as we could. Fee included, inter-fund transfers and proposed expenditures.
Can I just ask a quick question about that? I probably should have asked on Tuesday and we talked about this, but um. So why transfer from the TIF and not just from the general fund?
Well, that's a, that's subject to discussion, of course, but the, the reason is because the TIF used to be the fund that we would do some of these. Capital improvements for stormwater management, pipe relining, um, you know, other kinds of things that were related to road construction, road improvements. Dave, I'll let you, I should have let you answer that. I'm sorry. I jumped right in. I don't know if the, if I.
No, I think under the revenue category, you should just keep talking.
Oh.
No, I, I think you covered it. You're, I mean, yeah.
And we.
That was part of, was, I mean, maybe I'm, guy, I've got this wrong, but that was part of our decision that we were making. When we were talking about the stormwater fee, if we still wanted money to be coming from the TIF to cover that, right? Or am I not?
So I, I can probably help with part of this, um, now that I, I think I'm knowledgeable enough to talk about it. And that is that um. We, we were spending all of our stormwater money out of the TIF fund. What we decided is that for projects that are. CIP road project related, that the stormwater related infrastructure improvements would stay in the TIF. If it was not a project programmed in the TIF road project, then it got moved into the stormwater fund. And so that's how we're accounting for the expenses.
So we, I think that was like a board decision. Early on in the extended play stormwater discussions.
Yes, that's how we developed the level of service and the, I, I still call it the level of service, but that's, there was, there was a spreadsheet of this is, this is the cost. For the overall stormwater management program and built into that was the fact that we were keeping stormwater related improvements for road projects with the road in the TIF.
Right, so we kept those in the TIF. So why? And I, I, I know we discussed this, but I am blanking on why we still kept an, an inner. Fund transfer to the stormwater fund from the TIF if we're keeping some of those projects coming out of the TIF.
It's because some of the, some of the stormwater improvements that were in the TIF pre-stormwater fund, pre, pre uh twenty twenty-one. Were not affiliated with road projects. So there, it's for capital improvements that it's not the uh lining of pipes that aren't tied, that aren't state, that, that aren't things that are tied to a road project. We moved those into the stormwater fund. So because those were expenditures that were resident in the transportation improvement fund and were then being offloaded into fund twenty. Or redirected into fund twenty, there was a supplemental transfer of TIF dollars to account for that. And you'll see in twenty twenty-one, that was about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We're proposing a reduction of that. We'll continue to monitor that in future years if we can reduce or even eliminate it further. The board could say, we don't want to transfer from the TIF. We want to transfer it all out of the general fund. Uh, and we, we could certainly do that. It'll have an increase in the fund balance in the TIF. It'll have a decreasing effect in the fund balance in the general.
Okay, that makes sense. So it's really a past project thing. And so we're even, we'll be evening out kind of. So next year, when we look at that. We might have caught up on all those past TIF projects that are stormwater related and have it better separated.
I, I'm not sure I would characterize it as like a catching up of past projects. It's just money that would be a store, that would have been a, for expenditures that would have been but for a fund twenty in the TIF.
Okay, yeah.
That are now applied into, into fund twenty. But we will, the, so your second part of your question is, yes, we would monitor this every year. And of course, the ideal situation is to not transfer funds from other governmental funds to only do the transfers from general into uh these other funds. But not always, it's just sort of a, a, a best practice. It's not always uh something that we're able to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Move on to expenses. So under four oh seven, seven fifty, uh hardware and software to support the efforts of the um. Inspections and inventory data collection. Uh, Eric, I do have a note for you here. Sorry if I didn't catch this earlier. Uh, I know we. I know we requested surfaces. I know we requested surfaces to do the construction inspection. But that should be added to the capital project. So that would be under Fund O one, four oh eight. If you're putting that hardware in a specific fund. Did that make sense, what I said?
You want to keep it in Fund O one?
So the tablets are to inspect the storm system, right, for, for those individuals.
Okay.
The surfaces, the construction inspection, that, that would be either Fund O one or the, the TIF, whatever is appropriate.
Yeah, Fund O one. And then the data plans, that goes with the tablets?
Yeah, I don't know if it goes with both, but it would go with the tablets.
All right, I'll make a note.
Yeah. Okay. Salaries, as described earlier, some of this prorated to this fund. Under one, one, two, we do have the funding request for the, for the stormwater year. Under staff salaries, again, prorated time from the GIS technician. Here are the two part-time workers to do the inventory asset management and condition assessments of the inlets that we talked about. So for Lisa's benefit, that, you know, that was in the CIP and in the level of service plan for the, for the stormwater, when the stormwater fee was developed. Well, for everybody's benefit, I said Lisa because you'd asked about something like that in the past. Okay, engineering project specialties. This is for MS four, MS four PRP municipal separate storm system. Our pollutant reduction plan, projects for the Chesapeake Bay. I guess we just say impaired streams. Now we don't even say Chesapeake Bay. We have not advanced these projects like we should be. We plan to advance them and we are carrying the funding forward. We probably will not spend all our money on the Park Hills drainage way design this year. So that is a carryover of funding that won't be spent this year. Engineering specialties. We've got five thousand for engineering specialties related to services such as geotechnical expertise related to sinkholes or dewatering basins. We have some public education funding. Permit fees. And in the event that we do need to engage our consultant during our first year of implementation, we have some funding set aside. It's not allocated unless, you know, it's not spent unless we need it. We haven't. Sorry, I didn't say that in very good English, but I hopefully you understand what I meant. So advertising and printing, this is in the event that we need to do more outreach on stormwater. If we don't need to, I don't, I don't see that being spent. Do subscriptions, memberships. I don't have anything detailed, but knowing that we're hiring an engineer in this position, there's going to be some certification updates that he'll be needing training for. So now what we're doing is looking at, and four forty-six, we're looking at a proration of salaries for, for the road crew, the superintendent. PPE and some general expenses related to the positions. So the material cost comes once again out of the level of service. That is a, for total replacement of inlets. Small tools related to stormwater related activities. Just make sure we don't have the data collector duplicated. Right away costs, this is related to acquisition for easements for the Park Hills Drainage Project. Believe it was just escalated on a percentage since we haven't moved with it. I don't know for certain that we're going to need that much, but that's where that number comes from. We didn't spend any of it this year. Utility costs, unfortunately, that is based on a new estimate for utility relocation, relocation costs. Predominantly for electric and we have some costs related to cable on the project. And that is just a more refined estimate as the engineers work with the utilities, unfortunately.
That is unfortunate. I don't know why I was having this fantasy that somehow the utilities were having to pay for their own relocation. I guess it was just wishful thinking.
To the, you know, we, we are really, we are trying to minimize those costs the best we can. They are escalating, right? We had a meeting yesterday with, with UAJA. And you know, they should be, you know, performing that work themselves. So this is, this is mostly electric and communications.
Thanks, Seth.
So this is similar to my suburban park comment. You know, my issue isn't with the cost that this is going up. The cost is the cost. My issue is with the estimate. And you know how difficult it is to plan when the estimates are so far off. So I don't know what we can do about that if, you know, we need to be getting the estimates at a closer time to when we're looking at this budget instead of, you know, several months prior when we're doing the CIP. Because there it's not really contextualized within the budget. So we're, you know, just looking at numbers in the air and, you know, this is an estimate. And we have to trust the estimate. So when we get here a few months later, it's just, it throws you like, oh, okay, this is tripled since where we saw it a few months ago. And I don't think it's intentional in any way. I know it's not, you know, it's just, it is what happened. So I just, but I want to try to fix that so that we're, we're, you know, better prepared at this point because we know what we've, what we've approved in the CIP. And so, and we're all looking at much more realistic numbers. So, you know, however we can do that, I don't have the answer to that, but you know, it's just something I want us to keep considering so that we're, you know, just more you know, more as accurate as we can be and as best prepared as we can be when we're looking at these budgets.
I think this is the exact reason why COG does not want to include anything in the CIP because they are afraid that it'll be off. I just, I wonder if we should just like, as elected officials, put like a little plus or minus twenty percent after an estimate.
Actually, that, that's kind of what I, what I was thinking may be a potential solution. Is that if we provide to the degree we can, and it'll be a total guess. I mean, that we could do that, demonstrate that in the CIP. Here's what we estimate for now. Here's the, you know, here's a additional, if it's going to cost us ten percent more, if it's going to cost us ten percent less. This way you're looking at a range. It's, it's not going to be particularly meaningful, but it might at least help to really illustrate what that might look like if it comes back to you in operating budget and the, the costs are significantly different.
I, I understand the concern. I, I with transportation projects prior to utilizing paper, I'll just say, you know, over the last twenty years, not my first two years here. The budget numbers that I've been able to put together for transportation projects have been pretty solid. Obviously, the closer you get to the project, engineering does a detailed estimate. With utility relocation costs, those unfortunately evolved and we didn't have a lot of control over the path and the cost that we anticipated with utilities. And so I, I think we did the best we could with the information we had and continued to refine it. You know, as time went on and certainly the closer we got to the actual budget, but I, I apologize for that. I, I, I can understand you wouldn't like to see that.
Can we call Comcast and threaten to cancel our service and then give us a lower price? Oh, I must be the only one that does that then.
I do that with Sirius XM radio.
Excellent, excellent. Telling you it works.
Avoided it for a long time and then I got hooked and then I then I bagged it and then they kept chasing me down and.
Yep.
But yeah, with those estimates, I know what happened with, with the park project, I think primarily with bridges, it's happened here. Unfortunately, we're going to see it in some of the road projects too, because a, a couple of things, the way we estimated using paper and then knowing what projects we were going to do, engineering staff actually did detailed estimates of, of every project. So that we had a better idea when you look at the budget. So at least when you adopt this budget, you have a better sense of where we're going to be with the most realistic estimates that, that we could give you. Equipment rentals, nothing. Contracted services, this is the, this is the pipe cleaning and video assessment. We saw those prices fluctuate because of the way we structured the contract. We believe we can get that unit price down lower. I think I have it a little bit higher than what we had in the CIP. Because of the bids that were open, but trying to keep it still within that same number of around a hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Even though you might see the, the unit right per foot is somewhat more. And now here we are into the capital construction. The biggest item, of course, is the Park Hills Drainage Project. We've got pipe lining, that number, you, you should be reflective of what you saw in the, in the CIP and the stormwater level of service. Same, that shouldn't be a surprise, same community partnership program that was just escalated five percent on top of the probably fifty thousand that was in the program. So, so the bottom number is a surprise though. So Johnson Road was not included in the projects in the level of service to develop the fund. It was discussed by the board last year. We've been refining estimates since then. And this is currently what engineering staff feels is, is a conservative cost to make those improvements. One of the things the board had, you know, talked about was perhaps diverting the water onto an adjoining property. What, unfortunately, what I, what I found out when I went back and researched that option forward is it was investigated. And the reason the property owner wasn't amenable to it, there may be other reasons, but his septic field is at the bottom of the hill there. But would have put more stormwater on top of his septic field. So if
Fair enough.
Yeah, if we want to proceed with that project, you know, that's hopefully a conservative estimate to contract that work. So that's the end of Fund Twenty.
Lisa.
Um, thanks for checking on that, because I know we all went out there in our CIP tour and looked around. It was, I don't know, that was really interesting to see, really, you know, where we're going to do this. So okay, so that one, and you know, Park Hills is the big item in the stormwater plan. And so, you know, I just, I feel good that once we get past that, those, I don't know, those numbers won't be so big. Like this is a big one that has to get taken care of. But what I wanted to say was I, we were talking about the ARPA funds. And so I do, I don't know if we need to flag this for tonight's conversation later to suggest using some ARPA funds for that, or if we can hold that for our work session, but I definitely want to look at using some of that. You know, it goes really straight back to residents. If we put some of that money into paying for this when it's coming out of the fee. So I feel like that's kind, you know, a, a practical call there. So if we can flag that for, I'm hoping we can do that at the work session.
Yeah, Dave, what do you think about that? So like, instead of flagging it for our later budget conversation, flagging it for the list of ARPA considerations?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that's up to the board. I think the intent was to have the work session to decide how to utilize the, the, those monies. So it would stand to reason that we would talk about it on the thirtieth, no, the seventh. And so I, that was of course something we anticipated and, and we'll make sure that's a subject for discussion. It is, I think I, I'm fairly confident that everything associated with that project is an eligible cost for Rescue Plan Act funding. So, and we expect a second tranche of one million thirty-seven thousand or perhaps I'm getting those numbers wrong, but over plus one million next year. So that'll bring us to that two million thirty-seven thousand in total.
Good, okay. I didn't want us to have to get into numbers on that tonight. So great. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, even though we don't know much about it, is the infrastructure bill. And you know, the potential to get some grants and funding for, you know, Park Hills, maybe that Johnson Road. You know, I don't know, that Park Hills just seems so like set up to be grant worthy because there's so, it touches on so many different things. So for, for that, and I don't know, you know, really for anything that's stormwater associated, I would, I would expect that some of that infrastructure money is going to be applicable to those projects. So my question is, is there a way to asterisk some of these projects so that we don't break ground before we know what we can apply for in grants? Because it, I'm guessing we wouldn't be able to go backwards and apply for grants for things we've already done. So you know, and I know we don't know a lot about it, but I think we can only anticipate that something's going to be coming down the road maybe in the spring, that we would be able to know what's happening.
Yeah, there, there is ju- just now starting to be some guidance issued on the act and how it's going to apply. And of course, it was just signed only a couple of weeks ago. So to your point, Ms. Strickland, I think there's a lot of yet to be determined. I would not necessarily dismiss the possibility that it, those funds, if eligible, could be applied retroactively. That's been the case for the CARES Act and for the Rescue Plan Act. That some of the previously incurred costs were eligible. This is, of course, not directed at COVID relief. So you know, there's, there, there, this may be a completely different discussion. But I, I think, yeah, we, we, we did not, although we thought about and discussed, we did not factor in any of those, any of that revenue or that infrastructure bill money in preparing this budget, but we would continue to monitor for what is eligible, be it stormwater. Certainly, I think of the four million plus dollars in the TIF for road projects. I think there'll be a lot of money that we could capitalize to hopefully reduce our obligations there. It's just all kind of a wild card at this point.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And I think it's the, I'm going to bring the same point up during the TIF discussion and see, you know, I'm, I hope you're right that we could go backwards and apply any kind of grant we got to something we've done. But I'm just, I'm concerned about that and I don't want to miss a really good opportunity. So I guess, you know, just keeping that in mind before, before breaking ground on anything, I guess, is my, is my thought.
It's, it's of course a bit of an opportunity cost because as you delay projects, you put their final budget, now their, their costs in jeopardy. You put the other, in, at least in the case of Park Hills, we have one secured grant, 200,000. We have one potential grant, 250,000. So we got to be mindful of how those all kind of interrelate. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. I mean, I think this whole budget is asterisked to your point about, about what the potential applications of that infrastructure bill might be for. So we'll, we'll certainly stay on top of it. Eric is going to bulldog this one for us and, or watch it like a hawk, bird dog. That's the word I'm looking for.
Yeah, watch your analogies as the night goes on.
I don't know what's happening.
They do get worse. It's only 10 o'clock. The night is young. Yeah, keep it under, keep it close to your chest, Eric. Just place it close to your chest.
Brother.
Oh my. Steve, yeah. I had a question. It just occurred to me as Dave was talking about this. I'm wondering if it would be worth looking into, like as consultant, there will be a specialist in sort of the grant type process on this, or do we have the expertise in-house to really go after that kind of grant or with something this specialized? Is there somebody that might be worth considering a consulting contract to help guide us on that?
Probably also an unknown answer at this point. I think you're absolutely right. So we, and we did consult with NTM Engineering for the administration and application of the NIFWIF, the National Fish and Wildlife Grant, we did, that we did lock in. We did the DCNR grant in-house and Teresa kind of led the effort on applying for that grant. So it just depends on the technicalities of it, the complexities of it, what are the rest of our staff is engaged in our current workload. So
I was just thinking, there's so much money involved here. We ought to at least have that in the, you know, in, in our toolkit as a possibility.
And Hawks are circling because they, we, we're already starting to get emails from firms that are offering to do just you're suggesting.
And, yeah, and I think the, the amount of money that's involved, you could, you're going to find people who are really specialists in going after that sort of thing. And if it costs, you know, some money to hire them and they bring in some huge grants, that's turns out to be well worth it. So.
It does pay. Dirty vultures circle.
You know what, Dave? Now you're just being nitpicky, all right? I've seen Hawks circle before.
Okay.
And I think as we figure out how the money is coming down, we'll be able to to, you know, decide some of those things. And also, CEDOCOG helped a lot of the smaller municipalities with their ARPA funds and their different grants. So you know, that maybe they will have some, like issue some other guidance too. So.
Did you see my cynical hand wave? Oh, my God, I take it back. I'm so jaded. I'm like, they only ever, they never give to the center region. It's always like the other, right? I'm yeah, anyway. Hope springs eternal, I guess.
Are we ready for my next fund? Not mine, the next fund that I'm presenting. So on liquid fuels, Fund 35, page 161. Eric, do you want to talk about revenues?
You can see the chart there, the state pays us two different components of the liquid fuels money. In the CIP, we estimated to be flat, and that's what I put in here as well. You see, it did drop a little bit from last year. We don't know where that's going to happen, if the state's going to change the way they fund that or not. As, as the conversion to electric vehicles changes.
But we we did hear what our allocation is for next year, didn't we?
It's an estimate, 570. I think next year was actually going to be lower, but I, that's an estimate. So.
And then the transfer is just an offset is for the Center County Liquid Fuels Program. It is, we're going to get 50,000 for the, from the county for the Liquid Fuels Program. That's where, that's where the income is. So expenses for 3750, nothing for equipment. Typically, we don't have anything in the equipment category. Usually we spend our money on chemicals and supplies for winter snow removal for highway line painting and materials and supplies. So line painting reflects recent pricing that we received. So that's why you see the budget reflected the way it is. Also included is eradication in advance of microsurfacing. So the line painting contractor is the one that has the equipment and is capable to eradicate lines. So that's why we, and they actually do it. So that's where we really should account for it under that fund, not microsurfacing. So that's why you see it under 610. So it does include line eradication. So I went pretty quick past the chemicals and supplies. We typically budget 1,500 ton. That seems to serve us well. The price for salt is down from last year. And again, we purchase that through the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Coast Stars Program. You know, we'll, we'll keep attuned to any advancement in different types of materials, but certainly the go-to material is salt. And calcium chloride is added as needed when the temperature drops. I do prepare a winter snow ops plan that I review with the crew and police every year. And, you know, probably spent an hour with them last week going over our snow operations plan. And they are sensitive to the amount of salt they put down. They are trained. They do have ground speed sensors. And it does, it does depend on the conditions as to how much you're putting down, but they know that there's a right amount to put down, you know, as a concern for the environment, if you're putting down too much, there's a concern for safety if we're not getting out there and keeping them in the condition that they're expected to be.
Steve, I have one question. I know I've asked you this over and over again, and I'm just making sure for our brine, we do not use any frac waste, correct?
You are 100% correct.
Okay.
Our brine, we purchase it for, and I purchase it, we acquire it from PennDOT Belfont Maintenance Office through an agility program where we provide them services, they provide us services or product. And I want to say it may even be solar salt, but it's, it's, it's a product that's made at their facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. It's probably big, big spring water and salt in a solution of 23% brine. Contracted maintenance, that is increased based upon the items that we talked about during the CIP, the microsurfacing, which we do every year, but we're, you know, looking to increase the amount that we're doing. And then the base repair in advance of the microsurfacing. The ADA work is low, so I think that's under 439, 610. And that is our curb ramp replacement program. So whenever we microsurface a road or pave a road, we are to check and see if the ramps meet current standards according to the American Disability Act and then upgrade ramps that do not. And then we have, that's where we're accounting for the spending of the money for the science park sandy traffic signal. So what, what that means if we're spending 50,000 here, wherever we're spending most of it in the TIF, you know, 50,000 of it wouldn't need to be budgeted there. And that gets us through Fund 35 Liquid Fuels. I'm pausing and looking for questions and I see Ms. Strickland. I say Lisa and Dave says Ms. Strickland, so I gotta like be consistent.
I like the balance.
All right.
Keeps me, it keeps me awake this late at night. So I just wanted to note that we're really spending down the balance in the liquid fuels fund. Is that right?
Our predict, projections are at year end 2022, we would have a $265,000 fund balance in liquid fuels. Actually, I said that like I knew it by heart, but I think that 265,000, yeah, so it is a significant depletion of the projected fund balance largely attributable frankly, to the microsurfacing projects.
Mm hmm. And then, so if we kept that pace up next year, we'd have to look somewhere else because the revenue won't increase in that fund.
Most likely, the revenue would not increase. I would expect maybe Dave's better one to answer that. I, Dave, do you think that this, this is, is this a one-off or is this a annual that, that you'll be doing three quarter million dollar microsurfacing every year?
I think given our, you know, funding stream, it's going to be a one-off, but you know, we'll just have to evaluate it in future years. But you know, we're going to have to make sure that our yeah, our expenses aren't exceeding our balance sheets.
Right. I think, you know, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
I just didn't add that the board could change that number and then we'll work within the, the means of what you authorize out of the fund if and then we'll just kind of deprioritize where we think perhaps could be deferred for a couple of years. But unlike the paving projects, these aren't specific road lists like here, this, this segment, that segment, it's more just a lump sum amount, I guess. And then we, we work through the projects. I mean, Dave knows where those projects are.
Yeah.
Itemized in the budget.
You know, in, correct. I would say in past years, that's a little more accurate than this year because using paper, it's, it's chunking those, those roads out for us. So we, you know, we're, this is following and a paver's program of road projects.
Yeah, this was all based on our direction when we were messing around with how we wanted to prioritize our road projects. So.
Dave magic, I think it was called.
Yeah, Dave magic.
Right, Dave did his magic and I still agree with that. I think, you know, taking care of some of this backlog is going to prevent some of those roads that are really poor condition from completely falling apart. And we had the example of O'Brien Lane by the high school, which nobody could access throughout the summer. So, you know, we don't want to get to that point. So I think, you know, picking up this backlog is good. I don't expect to see this kind of number next year because, you know, we will have spent down this liquid fund balance, but I'm supportive of this for this year. It's infrastructure year. So I think this is.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out too that the fund, the, the expenditures that come out of the liquid fuels fund don't necessarily have to come out of the liquid fuels fund. We, we use them there first because there are restrictions on that money, but if, if we're over, you know, over the liquid fuels budget, you can always go to the TIF fund for those type of things as well. That then you have to balance the other things you have in the TIF and what's most important, but but, you know, the liquid fuels doesn't have to cover everything of microsurfacing if we do have more than is coming in. So.
Yes, and
Add more juggling.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess that's why I'm saying I'm supportive of spending down some of that balance and then reassessing before we before it's automatically assumed we do the same thing next year.
Good.
Are we, are we moving along to the next fund?
Yep.
All right, we did liquid fuels. We're moving to Capital Reserve, page 177.
So I'll take that back and then we'll bounce this one around a little bit. I think chief covered police in Capital Reserve on Tuesday. So Jenna, Eric and Dave and I will all discuss our little kind of pieces of this. Revenue, starting on page 178 under, I mean, there's interest and then we also receive lease payments from Center Region Code Administration for their occupancy of the fire trailer. That's going to be received for another four years and then we'll own the building and we can either evict the tenants or we could consider something else. I'm sorry, my screen just minimized all my windows. Which I'm sure was me. I'm sure I clicked something that should have, in fact, like it's, it's doing it on its own. DEP DCNR Grant Recycling Revenue. So this is for the, the combo brush box leaf collector. We'll talk a little bit about under expenditures. It was a 80% or 90%, Dave, do you remember offhand?
I believe 90.
Yeah, I think it was. It was 90%. There was a 90% grant project. So the township was only responsible for 10% of that equipment acquisition. As I said, we'll discuss that momentarily. And then interfund transfers under Capital Reserve, which you'll see are very significant this year to shore up that fund balance. We're proposing a 1.5 million dollar injection from the general fund into Capital Reserve. And that is revenue.
It's just so interesting to me how we always seem to get those leaf and brush collector things at such a small fraction of the price. It's, I don't really, like, it's like the state or somebody is paying someone a lot of money to pump those things out like crazy.
Yeah, I mean, the money flows through the state and we apply to DE DEP, DCNR. EP.
DEP.
Yeah, DEP. And they do, I will say this, they do look favorably on municipalities that have a, a regional composting and recycling facility.
Interesting, okay.
I mean, they, it's, it's a question in, in the grant application and, and I know it gets scored favorably. Not to say if we did things differently, we wouldn't still get them. We've been very fortunate every year that we are eligible and we're eligible every other, every other year to apply. Very seldom do I apply for something and we're not granted the funding for it.
Interesting.
Eric, if you could just make a note, I, I caught on the page 178 at the bottom, 387.00 private donations, that 3487, that's a, that was a 2019 figure. So that's got to be zeroed out for 2020. Actually, we could probably get rid of that line item entirely.
Okay.
So that was, yeah, that came, that came in 2020. That was a you know, nobody's privately donating to our Capital Reserve Fund. I mean, it would be nice if they did. That was a, that was actually a contribution from the Lou Sylvie Foundation when we had capital, we had Parks Capital expenditures for a fence at the, or I think a fence at the Teener Field. So it'd be nice if more people would donate to our Capital Reserve. And then under, so starting, if there's no other questions on revenue, page 180 starts expenditures. And a couple of things under administration, first is a carryover amount for, you know, some additional, what we anticipate next year's it's a small fraction of the cost, but our obligations that will remain for the Strategic Plan Consultant. And also we had some ancillary expenses, public engagements, marketing material, apparently food at these events, which we should have had. And there's one other line item that's in here, well, two other line items, a, a small amount for the, for lobby furniture in the, in the front office in the municipal building, that's getting pretty old and, and is in need of some replacement. So what we're proposing to do is actually kind of make that little lobby waiting area where we have the community table, bit more of an inviting make that little lobby waiting area where we have the community table, bit more of an inviting space, um, a digital display board for the announcements, I guess, that we, we put up right now. We have like the traditional or the older little letters that we stick on the wall. Centuries, I don't know. It's, am I going, am I in the right direction on this? You, you were the one that.
Yeah, right now we just have a very traditional, um, board where we have the, yeah, the little letters that we have to go in.
Letters. Yeah.
That reminds me of bingo when I went with my grandma. Um, but it's very active. Uh, it's just, it's, it's a digital display board that we could put promptly there in front of where people are entering the building and just having regular updates shared. It would, it would also be a communication tool within and amongst staff, visitors, et cetera. Yes, Dave, you were doing great.
Thank you. And then lastly is a cybersecurity test. Really, it's, this, uh, it was expected that we're going to be able to do this at little to no cost. So there's only a small of that $41,000 figure. There's only a small portion of that. That's really for this test in the CIP. It was 10,000. I believe it's five. Um, and how we calculated our request for the capital reserve fund. Uh, there's a lot of free, um, uh, kinds of things like this that you can take advantage of with the Department of Homeland Security and some of the federal agencies that are helping shore up against cyber attacks. But we'd like to do some vulnerability assessment, uh, next year, which uh, we're, we're proposing be partly funded through capital reserve. Um, if there's no questions on admin, I can move on to information technology 407.750. There are some typical costs that you see here. We have server replacements as those life cycles uh, kind of phase out. We have one that's in need of replacement next year. And we can virtualize the servers, meaning we, we might get one server box, one physical machine. And but that may be able to accommodate three or four, depending on how much space is needed. Uh, pieces of software. So, or, or everything really that we do with our building operations is tied back and has a server need. It's all uh, digital. It's no longer just a mechanical system. So we have some growing needs. Uh, but we have only a few physical boxes in our server room. And as we can virtualize more of them, we can kind of pare that down. But we do have one that's slated for replacement in 2022, which was covered in the, in the capital improvement program. A talked a little bit earlier tonight about moving to purchase some of these copier equipment, uh, machines, copier machines that we have. We're talking about doing one in the, for our primary office use. Um, it gets probably the, the most use out of any machine in, in the building. Maybe the police have, uh, their needs, engineering has their own uh, smaller machine, but that's the cost to purchase that. It's a significant savings to the township in a very short amount of time. So Eric and I think it's a, a, a wise investment. The copier out in the lobby area that's primarily used by the, uh, planning and zoning administrative assistant. Um, is, I, I think it's just a paperweight now. I don't even think it works anymore. Uh, am I right, Jenna?
Uh, the one outside the break room or the one? Yeah, that's.
Parts, they can't fix it.
Yeah, it's, it's cut foot. So we're, that gets quite a bit of use. Uh, Shelley Tamang will use that primarily and, and we're budgeting a small allocation to replace that or a $3,000 allocation to replace that. Uh, Dave, you want to talk about anything more on asset management? I think you touched on this before.
I can say that we're hopeful at the center county, uh, excuse me, center region code office purchases, the tracer software. All indications are that they will. In the event they don't, we still want to move forward with it ourselves. And we do have a gap to bridge between now and then. We're using McMan Associates. They are the tracer vendor and we're starting to transition some things into um, a survey one, two, three, um, our GIS platform. So we can start getting geared up for it. Some small expenses related to that and all of that will be ported into the tracer. So I think it'd be, be great if everyone in the office planning um, and engineering, all of us are using, you know, the same software. It just helps with those folks that are using it and can help train others.
Thank you, Dave. Um, replacement switch. So this isn't like a light switch. This is, um, basically where all of our, every internet jack, every ethernet cable feeds into the wall, which then goes into a switch, which then goes into the server. So it's a critical component of the IT infrastructure and we have, uh, I think we have two or three of them now. Plus we have one in the, in the, um, public works, uh, main building. So these are uh, pretty critical to our mission. And what we're talking about is uh, improving the quality of them so that we can accommodate more ports, more of our growing needs and also uh, a, a longer lifecycle. So, uh, there's a, a appropriation in there to replace our switches. Um, UPS is an uninterrupted power supply. So these are for when, if, if there's a power failure, servers, uh, don't conk out and have to risk potentially losing data or, or some other kind of failure. Um, we have one that's ending, ending our, ending its lifecycle next year. And of course, you want to be proactive in replacing these as opposed to waiting for those to go bad. So we have a, have a pretty good handle on the lifecycle for those and, and try to be aggressive in our replacement. When warranted. Main meeting room AV equipment. I was hoping that by tonight I would have something concrete to share with you all. Uh, Eric and Centuries and I met and they've made a cameo appearance, uh, met with, um, Bill Hartsock with Doble and they, Bill used to work for CNET. He did a lot of the um, uh, work that went into the current AV setup that we have many years ago. So he's, he's got a really good handle on our facilities and what our needs are and had a couple of different scenarios that he's putting pen to paper on to try to, try to shore up that estimate. He is confident, at least what he said to us, that $50,000 will be more than enough uh, for us to either just be able to address the hybrid meeting setups or even do some other improvements that I think would make it a more functional room for the public, easier for the board to interact with the public and one another. So there's a couple of options to consider. Unfortunately, I don't have them for you tonight. Uh, so we're proposing this number stay the same. I, I think it could be an eligible use of rescue plan act funding. Uh, so it's asterisked right in, in the budget document. Um, and, and of course we would apply that if the board wanted to enhance that service. So. And then, uh, lastly, to, um, install a new firewall, um, they really are the prime, the primary defense that we have against cyber attacks. So we, it's, it's critical that we have one that is, um, is capable to meet our needs and really block out a lot of the evolving uh, threats that are, are out there. And that's it for IT. If there's any questions.
I got a thumbs up. So 40750, capital equipment buildings. Uh, the first line item you would not have seen in the CIP because it is basically carryover. So it's, there's $97,000, at least at the time this was prepared, that we had not yet paid the building contractors to finish out their contract, retainage, final, final items. So that money is carried over to next year. It's not additional expense. It's money that is moved from one year to the next. Same with the next item. There's still funding there that we haven't paid out on the architect's contract. I know I have uh, some invoices sitting in my box I need to get to for him. They're, they're not significant, but there, you were still engaged with him and there's still, uh, contract items to finish. The rest of these should all be familiar as being in the CIP. Um, exterior, interior door fobs, fobs, fobs and more fobs. Cameras. Cameras. The following is just, um, kind of a, a, a fund balance and showing uh, the deductions and the additions. So the deductions would be for steel entrance doors. The water heater in the basement, living on borrowed time, and I did not get around to getting it replaced this year. Uh, carpet tiles in the, in the admin building. The roof on building three. Shingles on the salt shed might be a new item that you, um, haven't seen to the extent that we need to, um, I have some funds budgeted those, I don't know why, but those asphalt shingles are curling um, again, and showing, um, really bad signs of deterioration. So I need to do a little bit more investigating, but that's what that item is. Wellness committee fund. I have not been as involved in, in past years in the deductions. So um, I'm assuming they come out of the CIP, but if anybody can speak to those better, feel free.
They do.
Okay.
There's a couple of items that, uh, they're looking to, um, replace or upgrade down in the workout room next year.
Police, was that, was that talked about already, Dave?
Yeah, we can, we can breeze right over police and then Jenna can take the mic for planning.
All right. So for this, um, two biggest things that we have in here would be the sinking fund for the Northland mobility study, uh, as well as the tourist streetscape, um, zoning rewrite that we um, have for 2022, uh, Northland area mobility. That's essentially to install the priority projects that were identified in that plan. And Dave, um, Modricer can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the one was already completed, the flashing yellow arrow on eastbound blue course. So it's one of the six priority projects already done for that. But that is part of the $1 million, um, dollar goal for implementing that.
Janet, what page are you on?
This is bottom of 182 going into 183. Thank you.
If I may, just a quick word on how I'm going to share screen and just do a, a two minute update on sinking funds and how they appear in your fund balance table. So you'll see here a capital reserve. Uh, and, and this is at the beginning of your budget document. I have to refer to the page, but it's a very helpful summary of all of our different governmental and non-governmental funds. You'll have 2020 actuals, which is based on our last, our most recent audited year. What we budgeted last year or the, the current fiscal year that we're in, 2021, in this case, what we're projecting the cost to be, and then what we're proposing, the 2022 budget would look like. And then you'll see something we started doing recently is committing fund balance. And that's this 777,122 dollar line item. Uh, and then we have this uncommitted fund balance of 208,868. So that's 777, $777,000 number is going to be the cumulative total of all of our sinking funds. Uh, that essentially, and I'll stop sharing, uh, that essentially earmarks those, uh, those monies for their intended purpose. So that we know that when we go to spend them on new equipment or in this case, the Northland, uh, excuse, yeah, Northland area mobility study enhancements, that that full amount will be there. So just, uh, it, it compounds year to year. So if the board approves, in this case, the $250,000 sinking fund and then does the same next year, that committed fund balance will then increase by another 250,000. It's highlighted in green in, in that table, but really the purpose of it is just for us to know that that money's off limits in the fund where we've already dedicated it to another purpose.
I, I, these, these always stump me. So in the Northland money sinking fund, what's our balance?
Zero right now. We don't have, we don't have anything in there. We proposed a $250,000 allocation in 2021. It was removed by the board.
Okay. And we didn't have any leftover from before because we had spent it.
We had never established this. This was new and new to the 2021 budget. I don't, I don't think we had it in 2020. We, we may.
This happened like when I was on the board with every person was different except for Steve is when we established it. But, oh, but maybe it was like the fake sinking fund and then we made.
Yeah, it was, it was never really established. They talked about it, but then actually.
Okay.
Right. So, so we, we funded the study. Uh, we had talked about how we were going to provide improvements or, or, uh, fund improvements, but there was never anything that made its way through the budget process. It was either new this year or for 2021, or it might've been in 2020, but it, it had been removed. Really what we'd likely be doing with this, because if you look at the priority list in that, in that mobility study, the top three priorities all have to do with blue course drive improvements. There's uh, two that have to do with segments of shared use paths. And then there's one kind of mid-block crosswalk. Uh, that's, that's plugged into that too. Oh, Jenna's got them right here. So you'll see those top three, one, two, three major concepts. That's about a million dollar project right there. So in, in those three altogether. I think on the right-hand side of that table, there's an estimated cost. And mind you, those are in dollars from, uh, yeah. So that really one and three are the, this, the, uh, it's really 1.3 million dollars. Uh, so those, um, are, are big dollar items and they're old nu- numbers. So there's a likelihood that those have even gone up. So of course we can't really make a significant dent. What we'd probably be doing, talking about the infrastructure bill is capitalizing on uh, whatever money would be available from that to try to fund construction. This would help us with design, beginning design and, and engineering, any permitting, planning for right-of-way acquisition where applicable, starting to get the pieces in order to proceed with the construction project because my guess is like any other grant program that we've ever encountered, the more shovel ready those projects are, the more attractive they're going to be for candidates for those grant projects or grant funds. So you know, we don't have anything specifically earmarked with this 250K to use. I'm sure if we're talking about implementing these mobility improvements, we'll find something to at least position us well.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Um, and, and so if we wanted to establish something similar for the small area plan, um, would this be the time to do it? Or is it, I mean, it's late and I don't want to hold us up, but, um, there's really not any budget that's attached to that plan. And they have projects in mind, but I don't think they were really ready to ask for specific funding for specific projects. So I'd like to, I'd like to get something in there, but it doesn't have to be anything as extensive as a sinking fund with all of this money. It could be smaller and not sinking. Um.
My, my recommendation for that, of course, we can do whatever the board decides to do would be to wait till the, till we're talking about 2023 budgets. Um, I, I mean, I think we'll, we'll get this, we'll get the mobility study done in 2022 and we'll get it done with some months to plan and prepare. We've got a lot of work that's, that's, uh, right now in the pipeline for, for next year. And I think if we are able to punt that one to 2023, it'll probably be more realistic, given anything. I mean, if we wanted to focus the money on that instead of this, maybe that, that might be the, an opportunity, but I just think we're going to be pretty busy with the work that's.
Yeah. Yeah. You're right. You're right. And I'm actually really not even thinking of these expensive capital investments. I'm talking about, we've been trying now for, I don't know how long since before the plan, actually, it was one of the initiators of the plan. We've been talking about getting flags for the streetlights and getting holiday decor. And it, I think that it was really frustrating when we'd been talking about getting these flags and then all of a sudden these Penn State, State College mask up flags went up. So this is not nearly as big of a project as some sort of a. Mask-up flags went up. So this is not nearly as big of a project as some sort of a capital investment. But it still needs some kind of a budget. Um, so maybe this isn't the place for it. Maybe I'm asking in the wrong place. Um. Uh, and we have asking, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I'm sorry, I mean, we're, we, we have the hardware now. You know, for all those flags. So I don't know if you wanna do it under the streetlight fund or, or where you might wanna put it, but. You know, we can, we can easily put, put flags up now that the hardware is there.
Okay, so let's put, put, let's put this one, then the list of things to talk about at the end. Of the whole meeting, um. Just so we don't, we don't hold things up uh, before the rest of the presentation, and then we'll go back to that. Thank you.
Are we on for thirty-seven fifty capital equipment public works?
Back to you, Dave, yeah.
Okay. All of these items should look familiar. As well as the dollar amounts, I believe they are all in the CIP. So you can let me know if there's anything there we need to discuss. Or else I can get a four thirty-seven sixty. I'm looking, and I believe that to be the case also with the exception. We have a carryover number. So what that means is that two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. If we don't spend it this year, uh, we're all expect to spend it next year. So. We have not received the truck. We've heard we might get it in November. If we don't get it in November, we might get it in December, and I don't know, we might get it in January. Um, but it seems to be taking longer and longer to get trucks these days. So. Kind of my. Guiding principle, I guess, is if we don't think we're gonna. Spend the money this year, don't show it as a projected expense, which I didn't. Show it as a projected expense for next year. So that's what you see there. Then we have the streetlight improvement fund. This is uh, converting ornamental streetlights. Um. To LED. And well, here we have fund decorative ornamental installations to be affixed to each streetlight. For holiday celebrations. So that's where um. You know, those funds would come from.
Well, um, okay, so I'm sorry, we're gonna have to talk about this a little bit. So. Um. All right, so there was money in a budget for streetlight conversion in Pine Grove Mills. That I thought was this, that was like the decorative part of it. But then we talked about that this past year. And it kind of like morphed into, we don't have enough money for that, so we're just gonna do the, the cutoff. Bumpy, the cutoff, whatever the kiosks, I don't know what, there was a name for them, the cutoff hubs. Um. And I was like, well, uh. There, there was, I'm blanking on the conversation, but there was then only enough money to do that. So. But that, that wasn't, was that work not done though, right? Or was it?
It, it was, it was not done. So, so we're all in the process of, of a. Getting the, we, we haven't even applied yet for the PennDOT permit. So, so that project's gonna move into next year, and I think the funding was under two different items. I think we're gonna see it somewhere else.
In the TIF, right.
In the TIF. So, so, so let's maybe. Asterisk this to make sure I didn't double up on it, but. But the, there were, there were two, two kind of projects that could combine to one. One was to um, switch from um. From the, from the metal halide to the, to the LED, and we know you had concerns with that. And the, and the other project really was getting the lights off the tariff system. And then there's a third project, which is continuing with streetlights west of the flashing light.
And that's its own fund. We talked about the Pine Grove Mill Streetlight Fund.
Okay, so let's try to bring that all together in this budget and in our minds. So. The tariff, getting off the tariff thing should be one distinct separate thing. That's a carryover from this year into next. But we haven't hit that yet. And then this line item right here, though. Is, there's a lot in there. It says it will be used to convert ornamental to LED. And so I know we were talking about this budget because now I'm recalling that. We could convert to LED, but it was gonna be too bright. And the only way we can convert to the lower Kelvin LED was to do more money because you have to have a whole new head or something like.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so. So when we're going through the rest of the budget here and wrapping this up, let's. Let's make sure, like, I think that this streetlight improvement fund, that amount of money. Should probably only be for decorations. So there are the flags, there are the. Uh, holiday decor, that kind of a thing. And that the actual engineering. Conversion stuff should probably be. Different, a whole different fund because. Now that we know that the LED conversion. That that is not gonna be enough money. Like, we shouldn't blend those two things, cuz we'll have double not enough money, and we won't be able to do either the flags and the decor. Or the streetlight conversion.
Yeah, so, so when we get to the TIF, let's see what I did there. Maybe there's some duplicity.
Okay.
That was gonna be my question. If you doubled up, we, we can look at it then with, with.
Yeah, there, there might be.
Um. So that's flags.
Yeah, so that's. Yep. Oh, street trees.
Tree trees, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure what you said. I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, um. This is where we have funding for um, for placements. I'm anticipating some uh, or typical, typical bald and burlapped some, and we buy bare root. Mainly the bare roots are for planting opportunities, especially where we may have underground utilities. And we're not so interested in digging big holes, so we dig smaller holes and plant bare roots. And then a number of tree planting opportunities. Uh, no contracted services. They were found under Fund One.
And then um, IT self-insurance is just to account for any um, unpredictable breakdowns or mechanical failures or. Um, unexpected failures in general for our IT equipment, and that's capital reserve.
Then it looks like Centrace or somebody talks about regional capital recreation projects.
Well, that's, that's Fund Thirty-One, so hang on. Is, is there any other questions on, on Capital Reserve then?
Oh, sorry, Dave.
Alright. So we can skip on down, I'll, I'll, I'll cover this one too, to page two seventy-five. This one's a pretty straightforward fund. Um, there is uh, some revenue for this is typically. Wait, hold on, I'm on the right, yeah, okay. Has, is often not, or has typically been from Fee and Lewa Park Land for new land development. Um, though about two years, I think, two years ago, the board started to shift some of those funds from Fund Thirty-One into Fund Thirty-four. And then we completed our reallocation, reappraisal from Fund Thirty-One to Fund Thirty-four. Uh, just in twenty twenty-one. So all the money that's left over in the fund balance, and Eric, I'll look at you to nod your head. You're not, your head's not even on screen, is um, there he is. Is um, the, the money that remains fund balance in Fund Thirty-One. Is the earmarked money to pay the regional park and pools debt.
Yes, it's really technically pool step.
Pool's dead technically, that's right. Um. So that's where, that's what you see, oh, get back to my budget.
I thought it was just earmarked for any regional projects. That's the, I thought what we came to last time. Even though there was a swimming pool shown in the TTD area and this all came from that, da-da-da. The, the general idea was it was regional amenities, I thought is where we landed last time.
There's an agreement with Penn State and Lizard Harbor in the township that. That money from them is strictly for pool debt.
I, I haven't looked, I, Mr. Miller can probably answer it. I, I.
I, I had that understanding. Until last year, and I think when we looked at the actual agreement last year, it was the regional aquatic facility. For that money. Now, the money that. That uh. We did with the Toll Brothers project was just regional recreation. And it wasn't even defined what was meant by regional on that one.
Right.
So that money that we transferred out was restricted recreation, but I, I believe when we looked at it last year, the. That the Lizard Hubbard did say aquatic.
Okay, so everything that is in, so is it correct to say every. Cent that is remaining in fund, what is it, thirty-one? Cuz I've lost my place in the budget at this point, uh, in fun, is all, is all having to go to regional pool debt.
Right.
Period.
Which now is the combined parks and pool debt, but. The pools are, well, the pools are, are more of that than what we have in money in there, in that account, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or about equal to that, actually. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then that's uh, that's really the subject of the expenditure item there under four fifty-two dot five thirty-five. That's our regional debt service. One twenty-nine, six eighty-eight for twenty twenty-two, comes right out of that. Uh, schedule that Eric has uh, down on the top of the next page, uh, top of page two seventy-six. Uh, and then to illustrate the point I made before, the, there's no uh, proposed transfers to the park improvement fund. With the movement of the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from Fund Thirty-One to Fund Thirty-four. Uh, that got rid of all the unrestricted fund balance in that uh, in that particular fund. That's Fund Thirty-One. I think we are now on to the TIF, which Dave has been excited. To get to.
Why?
Your energy carried you this far.
I tell you, uh, page two seventy-seven. Really starts on page two seventy-eight. I can talk about revenue, but if Eric or Dave would, would like to, um, feel free. So we got.
Got the Harley group.
Yeah, we got interest, and then we got. Two big grants, uh, the Automated Red Light Enforcement, and then we got um. Or. Uh, two of them, they're both Harley, yeah. It's not a green light, so it's two, they're both Harley grants. Under three fifty-four oh thirty. And then uh, someone else can talk about the transfers from the general fund if you want.
Yeah, just briefly, thanks, Dave. So we're, what we'll be presenting to you, and this is set by resolution, so we'll tee up a resolution on December sixth. Would be for the township to essentially restore what had been our formula for inter-fund transfers from the general into the tip. We're going back from, I think we, we, last year, we increased it from even a lower percentage to forty percent of real estate transfer tax. And what we're proposing in twenty twenty-two is that it go to the, the initial, the original fifty percent. Transfer tax. Uh. So that'll, that'll come by resolution, but that's been what we've uh, modeled here. Uh, in the uh, revenue side for the TIF.
All right, expenses, four oh eight, three one four. We'll spend a little bit of time going through these. Sixty-two thousand, this is uh, to finish up the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study for money that we don't anticipate will be spent this year. The same twenty-seven thousand for the Jacobs Engineering. Now we've got some new money, uh, ten thousand for lighting design for. Um, new, or that's continuation, a lighting design for new fixtures. New fixtures on existing ornamental lights and Pine Grove Mills. Um, a hundred and twenty thousand for a survey preliminary and final engineering. Of the Pine Grove Mills bike and pedestrian. Improvement. Project, so that would be the project that I submitted a grant for at your request. If we're successful, um, all of the construction money is paid for by the grant, but we need to do. Uh, the upfront money and that funding would be for that. And then fifteen thousand to do some of the design work. Um, to install eighteen new ornamental lights. Pine Grove Mills, so those would be west of the traffic signal. So that's all design work. Um, you know, hopefully, we get to the new stuff. Certainly, we have to finish up the stuff we already started. This is assuming we can do both and includes the funding for all those projects. Okay, now streetlight construction. So this probably is where I had some. Money allocated or something carried over in that earlier budget item that we don't need. So. So this is funding for capital expenses, Pine Grove Mills, ornamental street lighting. So remove the lights from the tariff, install meters and disconnects. So that would be uh, carryover or rebudgeting or reestimating of funds that we. Have not expended this year that we would be moving into next year. Um. And then I've got seventy-five thousand. If we wanna move forward with replacing uh, twenty-five heads with these new, more expensive. Um, LED heads, cuz you gotta replace the whole head. Uh, ideally, the new LED heads are dimmable uh, to, to twenty-two hundred, but. I think at the minimum, you want them to be twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. So I'll just pause there to see if there's discussion.
Lisa. Can we flag that one? Cuz I just wanna ask about that tariff, the, the metering. Um, if we can, if that hasn't moved forward yet, if we can reevaluate if we wanna do that next year or wait a year on that. Would that be possible at this point?
We can flag it for discussion.
Great.
I'm. I'm gonna cry like a little baby if we change it, but, but we'll flag it for discussion.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the tariff part, not anything with the lights.
You have to do that first. That was that whole very depressing conversation from before. Well, it's a safety thing. Well, they can't do any work on the lights until they can turn them off, or they have to throw the big master switch from West Penn Power or something there. Risk electrocution every time they work on them, I think.
Well, in, in certain cases, and I don't know whether this is applicable here, but we could obligate. West Penn Power to upgrade to LED technology, or we can request that they do, but that requires a, a ten-year contract under a new tariff. So we did that with just about every other streetlight, actually every other streetlight. That we have in the township that's on a tariff, and we renewed the ten-year agreement. I assume they still have that program in place. What's less clear to me is whether it would apply to this kind of hybrid tariff that we have going. Out there and, and ornamental light. I'm, I'm not sure whether it'd even be eligible, but. That would be the alternative if you wanted to do the conversion to LED and pause the. Um, metering and cutoffs. And they may not have the softer light either, so that might be a deterrent from going that route as well.
Okay, yeah, if we can flag it, you know, I'd like to move forward with the LED conversion, and if we can do it without the tariff. Thing and without anyone getting electrocuted, so we can line all this.
Let's flag it for discussion and roll on.
Okay. Four thirty-nine thirteen, um, right away. Uh, sign spark sandy. Uh, or possibly we've identified. Um, a drainage is- issue along Whitehall Road near the meadows. We, we may need some small drainage easement to. To make that work. Uh, but I think the, I think the funding, similar to what you saw in request in the CIP. Nothing on the utility relocation. Okay, we'll probably spend some time on four thirty-nine, six ten. So. Um, the numbers are gonna look different than what they were in the CIP. All of the road projects were basically. Um. Reevaluated with detailed engineering estimates. All of the curbing. Um. And the concrete work was included. And I'll go down through each one of the projects. So Marengo Road is a paving project that. You know, came out of the came out of the paper program. A circle road. Paving patented the township line, the same. Uh, as did Oakland Road. And Whitehall Road paving tadpole through the meadows. And old Gatesburg Road from uh, Science Park to Nixon. And we talked about some backlog work, so I highlighted those as backlog, so that would be Allen Street. Um, and over the kites, West Aaron Drive, Atherton to Martin. Uh, Park Crest Lane, we identified as backlog work. Then work that wasn't included in the CIP but has since been discussed is Harold Drive. Um, and then sleepy hollow drive. Uh, research drive was a was a backlog paving project. The ADA compliant curb program was was a line item in the CIP that's included in the individual estimates. I think we have a more refined estimate for the relining repairing. The storm pipes associated with the paving projects, again, the concrete curbing is included in the detailed estimates. Seal coating, um. Pavement repairs for bike paths was in the CIP. Then you're gonna see some some new things here. Um, well, the the pet accommodations at at Shingle Town Road, I believe. Were included in the CIP, it is something that we, um, committed to. With Penn Dot, if it wasn't in the CIP, it's certainly something that we want to have in the operating budget.
It was in the it was in the CIP, it made it in.
Okay, and we might have some new items here, uh, these were requests. Uh, from a a a blind resident to the township. Audible push button. Um, at college in Bristol, that one might have been. In in the the CIP, but I've got added written there.
It was in as sixty four thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's been reestimated. Um, audible push button for pads at college and blue course. That's certainly a new item, I don't think you've seen that. Uh, similar request for your. Consideration, there are other intersections that requests were made for also, I did include those in here for your consideration. Um, I figured you've got. Two of them there to make a decision on before we even start looking at others, and obviously there's a a price tag associated with those. Science Park and Sandy, you you did see that before. Um, traffic signal interconnect, that's the full cost of it, but eighty three percent as we know is paid for by grant. Green light go, um, and eighty percent is paid for by grant. So I might have called something green light go instead of Harley, but but the funding's there for it. So I'll just pause at that point, at this point.
Lisa. So I just, well, first I wanted to make just a comment that I had made at a meeting before Dave, um, that you weren't at, I had. Attended a PML conference and they had talked about, um. Uh, pedestrian accommodations and an extended pedestrian signal. And how it can be more effective and safer if that extended time is given following. The red light, if you know what I'm saying, so instead of giving the pedestrians a lead on the cars, you give them um, time afterwards, and they were saying that. That appears to be a safer way to go, so I just wanted to make sure, because I know we had talked about doing that at Bristol, um, extending that time there.
Right, I I did mention it to the township engineer, the manager mentioned it to me, so. We'll look into it and, you know, give it more consideration, I think the. Kind of the first reaction was that. Um, at least in district two, the 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 lead interval seems to be more favored than the lag interval. Um, but we can, when I say district two, I mean Penn Dot District two. And the work that, you know, Ron's done in his world of traffic engineering. Other people appear to have opinions that the lag interval might, you know, provide more safe passage, so we'll just have to. Delve into it a little bit more.
Well, thanks for looking at it, and really the biggest problem at both of these intersections and all of them, college in Bristol, college in Blue Course, is the um, turning right on red. It is just such a dangerous situation at all of these intersections, so I think we can't ignore that, especially if we're adding these audible signals. I'm really concerned about that, adding the audible signals and still allowing a a right turn on red, so. I think we need to move forward, that one on Bristol had been presented a while ago, so I think we need to move forward with that, I'd like to flag the blue course and college one. Uh, to discuss later, but again, like I said, I'm so concerned about um, installing those.
Um, don't they, don't, don't they stop that right turn from happening if somebody's blind and crossing in front of the right turning potential? That seems like a real oversight on Penn Dots or somebody's part if that's allowed.
That I did for certain, I know there's a a a, you know, we were intending on having a lead. Uh, pedestrian interval. Uh, whether the audible, I don't think the I don't think the audible by itself. Dedicates that whole time for a crossing, I don't think it takes twenty seconds away from from the from the signal cycle. Um, but I I really ought to look into it more to 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 speak more certainly about it.
Okay, and just, you know, just enforcing the stop before the right turn. You know, so that there is awareness, there's a pedestrian signal, uh, in effect, you know, and somebody's crossing, that's that's what the problem is, is people generally don't stop and they don't look, so. Just, you know, an ongoing concern, but yeah, if we can just flag that college in blue chorus, that's a big number, um. And maybe talk about that one. And that's all I had, thanks.
Are we done?
Uh, yeah, the only other expenditure in the TIF is a transfer, the hundred thousand dollars to the Stormwater Fund, which we already covered, so that's, um.
There we are, okay.
Well, there and there are the, in addition to the flagged items from tonight, the couple of flagged items from Tuesday, and then the two staff positions as well.
Right, okay, um, so we're ready to move into flagged items and the two staff positions. Um. So.
Do you want me to tee them up, or?
Well, okay, go ahead and tee them up, I've been trying to work on some solutions while we've been talking.
So, um, the. I should have been more prepared after offering that, yeah. I was not prepared for you to tell me, go ahead. Grabbing here real quick, is, so we have the the ag preservation fund, uh, from Tuesday night, if you wanted to start there.
Okay, it's late, I'll try to keep it as short as possible, I want to try to like. Read the room, so to speak, um, so my proposal on the ag preservation item is that we just. Participate, whatever that means in terms of what's in the budget. Uh. And, uh, however, that we also make it a priority, and I'll put this in a consent agenda, uh, item. Uh, to formalize it, but we discuss two things in the next year. Um, that I think are related and could be an option, uh, in terms of participation and. And making sure Ferguson dollars stay in Ferguson, and that is, what would an open space preservation program look like? Um. And the other is, uh, what would be the benefit of an environmental advisory council, because I'm. I I their state has to support them somehow, and I'd like to know what that means. Um, and this relates a little bit, uh, if you all recall from the strategic planning session, was that just last night? Last night, about that tension, right, about. That ag, the ag representative that was there really being, you know, very adamant about how we should not think about ag land as open space. Right, and that's true, we shouldn't think about it that way, but we talk about it that way, how we're preserving open space by, so let's explore the issue. So I think that everybody would be on board for keeping the budget as it is in terms of ag preservation, is that true? Would we? Okay, uh, Lisa, is that true for you and Pam? Okay, and and I'm asking, uh, if we can also then talk about those things. In the future that relate to our previous discussion, and I'll put it in a consent agenda item that you can thumb up or thumb down at that time. So, Lisa.
Just wanted to ask, um, so generally, so next year. While we're in twenty twenty two, um. Diana and the, um, they would come to us and say, we're gonna preserve one farm next year, and this is how much your. Participation is estimated to be, so that would go in the twenty twenty three budget, so this is all that would possibly be needed, there won't be another farm added in twenty twenty two, I guess is what I'm adding, asking.
Yeah, that's correct, they, the, uh, the Ag Preservation Board will would have already made those decisions to preserve deserve those farms, so they think that far ahead.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
So that one's checked off the list, um, do we want to hit the?
Or what?
Yeah.
Did you say about an environmental commission?
Well, we'll talk offline later about that, I've been, you know, we always are trying to get money from anybody but our taxpayers if we can. And, um. Anyway, there's just a lot to explore in terms of how we want to proceed as a township in terms of open space preservation. Because the park, the parks, center region parking rec isn't providing that, and no matter how much the entire region wants it, they're just not gonna do it, so. We have to think about ourselves and our constituents who really want that, but we're not providing it, so. It was, it's a not really I preservation, but it relates to that because of the way we conceptualize it perhaps erroneously, about how it's our open space when it's really not. Um, so we'll talk about it offline.
What was, what was, you you mentioned a committee, some kind of environmental.
It's called the, it's called, it's called a thing in the Pennsylvania State Code, it's an environmental advisory council. And they they're somehow obligated to give you support if you have one, and so I just wonder if that can be a tool in our toolbox. Um, in trying to meet all of our constituents' desires as far as public lands go, so.
Okay.
So the another item, I think.
Talk about this when I'm more awake.
Yeah, exactly, put it on the back burner, we're talking about later, the other, and next, another maybe easy bucket thing, we got the data from the, um. Other emergency services, folks, could you review that with us, Dave, just the email?
Yes, I can, um, and. Who is probably slumbering away right now, gathered some of those numbers. Uh, that I provided with you earlier this afternoon, really not a whole lot of response from the two fire companies. Uh, Port Matilda Fire had zero responses in Ferguson Township in twenty twenty one, Warriors Mark had three calls for assist. Uh, that they responded to. Port Matilda EMS was a little more active in the township, they had nine, uh, responses there, so that that's all summarized in the email.
Okay, so Port Matilda EMS is the one we traditionally have really mostly supported, correct?
Uh, we've been doing the fire companies for a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's kind of the other way around, I think the fire companies have been for a long time, Port Matilda was the EMS was the one that kind of put the cry for public assistance, the outcry for public assistance. Because they were running into some revenue issues.
All right, I would propose to keep our Port Matilda EMS contribution the same. We'll take it one by one, what do others think of that?
I I think so, I I think that the EMS is, uh. They have more trouble getting funding. Than the fire companies actually, because municipalities have. Less obligation to provide that. Uh, it's it's a little weird, and I mean. There is an obligation to provide a fire fire services, but. There's not obligation to fund it, but I don't think there's an obligation to provide an ambulance services or Dave.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
I I'm not absolutely certain of that, but I do know that there's definitely no obligation to fund it. Because that's where Alpha is, is, uh, you know, they have their funding sources, and they don't have any funding except. For us providing it for municipalities, so.
I was really looking at their, like, the the coverage that they give to us and just really.
And it's really important coverage when you need it.
Yeah.
That ten minutes difference is a huge difference.
It's big if you're having a heart attack, it's really big, yeah. Um, and and they're, they clearly are responding, that's, I mean, right, so. So what do folks think about keeping that level of support as it is? Okay, I got a thumbs up, anybody else, okay. All right, um, so Dave, which one was the zero response?
Uh, the zero response was Port Matilda Fire.
Okay, so. I would propose to again reduce that, but not take it completely away, and I would like us to look at these numbers over time, so like after the budget. It's on my bigger list, can we get like a five year number so we can be better strategically and. Can ending continuing that conversation about whether we need to build a fire station or not. We talked about. This be like funding other entities as being a strategy for coverage, I think we could do some data collection, so like getting a historical data. And start being conscious about collecting data. What do folks think about, do you, do you all want to keep that amount the same or drop it? The the one that's provide provided zero coverage for our last year.
I guess, uh, I'll jump in with, it's not that much money. And it is, you know, essential services that need funding. On the other hand, if we haven't had. Calls that they're responding to, it, yeah, I'm sort of, sort of, uh. Not real strong one way or the other on that. Uh. It. It does, uh, you know, that, we need to have those existing. Because. The office need to have them in existence. Otherwise, the office are making the calls over to their area if something happens and they can't cover, so you know, it. There's a lot of, a lot of reasons why we got to where we were, yeah.
Yeah, but if if our approach is gonna be like the whole regional fire system needs help, then we should be donating through COG, and that should be the conversation then. But if we're talking about mutual aid for our people in lieu of paying for a fire station. Then I can see more of a pathway in that direction, if if I heard that for the past five years, they've had zero response every single year, I would remove the donation. Uh, that's what I would do, but I don't know what other board members think, if we also think that what Steve is saying is something that we should take to the region, then we should take that to the region, because. If we value that ability for mutual aid for Alpha, that should be a regional conversation. So, anyway.
Yeah, so I I'm sort of neutral on it, I.
Okay.
Like I said, I I felt fairly strongly on the ambulance service, but I think on the fire services, I'm.
Okay, I'm pretty neutral too, I'm just trying to have the dialogue to see if we want, yeah. Do others, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm pretty neutral as well.
Cam, leave neutral also, yeah, okay, Lisa, you are the only one that has an opinion so far, Schrodinger's opinion, but do.
Oh, no, because I'm pretty neutral on the. The Warriors Mark one, I probably have an opinion, but.
What's your opinion on Warriors Mark, let's jump to that.
I think that's, so that one had calls in our township, and that one, I believe, is the one we had talked about very briefly. Um, our, uh, mutual aid agreement and working to expand that. Um. So I wouldn't want to touch that one, because we've actually considered like moving, you know, building that relationship, but. The Port Matilda, I think that's a great point, I mean, has it been zero calls for the past many number of years, so I don't know, so.
It's not been many, we we've looked at these numbers, have them offhand, so I can't say exactly, but it's been fewer than a handful, like fewer than five a year, I think is what they average, so. Some years you'll see that number be two or three. So some years you'll see that number be two or three perhaps, especially if, you know, it's something like traffic control for an accident or something. But not many.
I mean, I'd be fine leaving it at this number this year because that's what we've been giving and then evaluating it and all the data next year, and then we can make a, a, you know, really informed decision.
Okay, let's leave them. Both of them say are, but can we please get the data in a more formal way ahead of time and start tracking it so we can really kind of get an understanding of that? And whoever's on public safety next year in Cog can maybe start to talk about this conversation that we have here, and maybe we should be having it at the regional level. Along with that can be the question of, does anybody else give Center Life Link any money? Because I don't know that anybody does, and we do, and so.
I'm fairly certain we don't, because I think when we made the donation, because we added that at the same time, the, when we decided to give money to Warriors Mark, we said, well, we should also be giving money to Alpha if we're going to do that. And then I think we were, not Alpha, but Life Link. And I think we were the first to do that, or the only ones to do that at this point, so.
We, we can ask them, we can ask other municipalities to pony up for once. Okay, all right, how's that sound, Dave? We got that under the belt there.
Yeah, and as it for all three, okay. And then get some five-year numbers I can, I can work on.
Great.
For responses.
Okay, can we go to the, can we go to the parks stuff from yesterday? Well, there's two things. One is the playground safety update. I was calling it a slushy line. It was like maybe 67,000. Is that right?
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred.
Thirty-seven, okay. So I would really like to see us not have that much in that line, but keep the entire servant, increase the likelihood of wanting to be able to pay all that money for Suburban Park. So I'd like to drop down that safety playground's update number to 5,000. And count on the region to do those equipment repairs, even if it means a little delay and that we have to put like a closed amenity sign on something. Because I want us to really, if we're going to use them as our park department and they're going to make a claim that they do all of our maintenance, I don't know that we should have $30,000 sitting there waiting to do the maintenance when they should be doing the maintenance. So I think that's also in line with the idea that they're going to be taking over the inspections of our playgrounds. And they can be planning their, the, the repairs and the maintenance. So my proposal is to cut that down to 5,000 and take all of that remaining money and just keep Suburban Park as it is with knowing that we've just added another like $32,000 taken out of this line. What do other supervisors think about that conceptually?
I like it.
All right, I see Patty's thumb. I see Lisa's thumb.
They're okay with it. I, I think, you know, I, I do think we should go ahead with suburban. But I, I think, you know, I, I can.
Great. I mean, if it keeps creeping up, I, I'm going to be like sad. But like where it's at now in terms of more expensive than we hoped. With this change, I feel good about moving that forward. And then I would also consider, now I'm jumping to tonight, because I was trying, what I was trying to do is balance out our priorities and just try to be as fiscally conservative as I could. So jumping to tonight, reducing some things. I think we have a lot in roads. We intended that staff presented us a beautiful budget that matched our priorities. Now we're having some sticker shock. I would be willing to remove a, a research drive. And another supervisor mentioned maybe bumping Harold out a year, but I'm not necessarily advocating for that. I know, you know, others might want to prioritize that, but that I would be willing, and I would also be willing to consider maybe another road that maybe Dave Modricer might suggest as being one that might be a good chopper, shopping block. But I would like to keep the $250,000 into the sinking fund for the Northland area in the hopes that we can build enough base money to get in some of those pedestrian improvements on Blue Course that we really want to do. And I want to keep the Pine Grove Mills Lights project. We've worked really hard to get to where we are. We're almost on the cusp. I really want to get that done. And I want to, I didn't, wasn't mentioned as a chopping block, but I'm just thinking in terms of wards, like I want to make this investment in the Northland area or Ward Three. I want to make this investment in Ward One in the Pine Grove Mills Lights, and then I want to keep that T S D rewrite money in there and have some attention in that Ward Two area where it really needs it. So that was kind of my thought about prioritization. I don't know what it works out in terms of numbers and how others feel about it. But I don't know if there was also anything else. Lisa, you had a few things about one in on the chopping block or maybe not, that you might want to throw into that mix and come out with some different suggestions.
So is this, I'm sorry, are we just doing the TIF now for roads or?
I was all over the place. I was thinking about it like in terms of the total budget. And if I were at the poker table, what I'd be laying in the middle and not, yeah.
Okay.
So you do what, you do whatever method works for you, and then we'll come out with some decisions in the end.
I got you. So let me just ask real quick, so I go back. So you mentioned Harold and research, and was there one other one?
I, I, not off the top of my head, but I was saying maybe Dave Modricer might want to mention one to us if we're trying to free up dollars.
Dave, before you answer, I, I wonder if you, you're thinking of the same one I am. That's why we'll go at the same time.
I have one I'm thinking of, but I'm going to let you say it.
No, 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 no.
Oh, put it in the chat, put it in the chat. Don't look and put it in the chat.
Come on, and I'll say it because it's late.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let Dave P. pull rank and pick the road.
Well, so I, I mean, I'd been thinking about potentially geez, what was I thinking about? Old Gatesburg Road, I, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Or, and, or Circleville from Patton Township to Bachman, or from Bachman to Patton Township line.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, those were the two that came, neither of those.
They're in decent condition to our, to our driving on them. They both seem very good. Except for the one curb there in Old Gatesburg, but.
Dave's going to say Sleepy Hollow. That's, that I think is what he's going to say.
I'm just not going to say it.
Was it neither of those?
So Sleepy Hollow, Sleepy Hollow is a possibility for the board to consider. I mean, it was one of those things that got wrapped up in the U A J A. What do they call it? Experiment or something like that, where they were connecting on lot septics to sanitary sewer? And we had this kind of Frankenstein agreement that I came up with and somehow everybody agreed to. And we are, it's probably too late to get into complexities. It's not necessary. But we excluded Sleepy Hollow from that because at the time it was in the C I P. And so some of the residents out there, we said, you know, we're not going to work that into this agreement because we're already planning on replacing it. So we didn't obligate U A J to pay for any of it. It then got removed from the budget year that it was scheduled for. So what I propose is adding it back in, but it is a backlog project. It's not something that was ranked on paper. So you could consider removing it, but there may be some residents that are unhappy if you do, is all I have to say about that.
Okay, so those are choices though. Okay, so Lisa, what, what were your thoughts about things you wanted to maybe, I don't know, if you have, you'd like the project to move forward, but you were nervous about the overall budget numbers or?
That's generally true. Okay, so the one I, out of the TIF, the one I had pulled was the audible push buttons at College and Blue Course. I mean, I would rather do that than one of the than.
Sleepy Hollow or something.
Right, yeah. I mean, if that one's backlogged, I guess I would ask Dave then, you know, where he would prioritize. Which one did Dave?
Dave M. or Dave P.?
Dave M., which one did you call out?
I, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll tell you how I feel, but it's, it's going to make my boss mad, and that's the the Sleepy Hollow Drive project didn't, didn't come out of paper. Block, and it didn't come out for next year. So, you know, I've seen projects come and go, and I'm careful when I tell constituents when it's in the C I P that, you know, it's not guaranteed till it's in the operating budget and it's funded. So, I mean, I get what Dave's saying, and I, you know, I don't want to make my boss mad, but that's the one I would have picked.
Yeah, no, it's not making me mad. When Dave and I talked about this, I said, look, it was in the C I P. It's got these, it's got potential resident backlash that may result. Let's let the board decide, so.
I got all sorts of backlash. I got backlash in that neighborhood, you know, from, from day one for that project, so.
Okay, so, all right, so somebody has to kind of keep track of the numbers for us as to what we feel comfortable with. Steve, did you have a?
I just want to bring one question into this. I think as far as the road projects, we sort of decided on a plan program to bring things in in a systematic manner. And I, I sort of reluctant to immediately back off that and take some of them out because we're trying to cut money, but I'm not sure we need to cut. Because we know that infrastructure money's coming. We, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure our budget's in a position now where we have to cut anything. And I would, at the very least, if we are going to do it, I think I'd agree with Dave Modricer and go Sleepy Hollow because it's not part of the, the process that we decided to follow to try to get everything into shape. The other thing is, you know, if we don't cut the roads, then I won't start pushing for restrooms at Haymarket Park in 2022, so. Just to throw, inject another little thing in here for.
Well, Steve, you make really, really valid points. I would say in terms of cuts, my desire to cut that playground safety line item is more strategic than a concern for the budget numbers. Like, I would, I personally would be ready to, other than that one reduction, because again, it's like, it's about a larger goal. I would be ready to pass the budget as is. But I want to be sensitive to others too. Like, I want us all to feel good about passing the budget. But you're making like a really, really, really good point about the program and the choices that we made and the desire to let that play out, so. Lisa, back to you. Like it or not.
Well, I, I mean, I agree with Steve. That's, and that's what I was saying earlier. Like, I like that we are spending down that liquid fuels budget. We are taking care of all these things, you know. So that's why I look at one thing, like the audible push buttons at Bristol, or no, Bristol was already planned at Blue Course. But fundamentally, I hate taking anything like that out. I just, that bothers me. So I really don't want to say pull that out because somebody is saying they need that. And I think that is a good enhancement for that area where you do have a lot of pedestrians. There's a bike path. I think this is, I think this is valuable. So what I would say, like I was saying earlier, I would like to asterisk everything and say, do not proceed until we have explored all grant opportunities. And maybe that's something that maybe those types of improvements will be in the infrastructure bill. You know, maybe pet and bike things will be a big part of it. I don't know. So I am really hesitant to say just leave it, but I also don't want to say pull it if you, if you understand what I'm saying. If I want it on there, if there's going to be some kind of potential for some, you know, other investments, person grant money for that one. Sleepy Hollow, I'm really torn on that.
Isn't research drive in good condition? Why do I always think research? It's like so wide. You can drive around anything problematic. Seriously, I mean, that bike path or whatever that sidewalk thing is, it is worse condition than.
Bike path is worse.
Yeah, research drive, if you remember, we walked it and
The cracks.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion. It's pushing and cracking. It's got a lot of traffic.
At the alligator cracks.
Very good.
That's right.
The, the other thing I just would like to mention is, you know, it's, it's a, it's a robust program for next year. I know things aren't carved in stone, so, you know, they're, you know, approved in the operating. But we really need to get started on design work because we try to get these things designed and get them out to bid by the end of March. So just in, just comment about holding off, you know, waiting for grant money. We, I don't know how much time we have to do that if we're trying to get them paved next year.
What about with like the audible signals? What, would you feel comfortable saying that you would wait on that? Like, is that an appropriate one to wait on?
Yeah, they, they, the timing of year is not as important for them as the paving project. I'm really talking about the paving projects. Our, our goal is always to get them out to bid by the end of March. So we can get favorable price and get on schedules.
Sorry, I thought, can you tell us about that audible signal? Is this something that's been talked about before? I know I was familiar with the Bristol one, so.
No, it's, it's new. That's why I, I put the parentheses, the word added behind that. It was a request that came into the township from a blind lady that lives just off Blue Course Drive. So the other, on the, on the borough side of Bristol Avenue, I forget my site that she lives on. So, so she walks to what I H M S Medical, Blue Course Medical, maybe it's got a different name. So, so she walks, you know, along Blue Course Drive, and then she crosses West College Avenue. It, it kind of came to, got personal with me when I was at that intersection. I went to turn left and I saw a lady over there with a red cane. I thought, really, you're gonna, you're gonna cross right there, but she does. And then she crosses Blue Course and at, at, at Old Gatesburg to get the H M S Medical. And there's, there's other routes that she goes, but that's, I guess, doctor office that she goes to. So, so that's how she communicated that to Ron. And I think she's, she's a, a, a member or a chair of a, I don't know the name of the association of the, the, for, for blind.
Federation of the Blind, I think.
Yeah, she's some, somehow active and, and seems somewhat educated in, in the subject matter. And so, you know, Ron just put, he actually had like three of them that he wanted me to present in, in the budget. And I said, Ron, I just can't present all those at once. And like, what's the number one of, of, on her list? And this was, you know, that was the number one.
And so that.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing an agenda item for discussion about accessibility in the township coming up this year.
Right, and I, I, thanks for sharing all that. And I know it sounds like it's just one person, but that's just one person who brought it up. You know, you don't know how many people that is affected that haven't taken the time to, you know, really go out of their way and bring it up. So, you know, these are important access. Taken the time to, you know, really go out of their way and bring it up, so you know, these are important accessibility and safety upgrades. So.
And one of the reasons it's so expensive unfortunately. Is I guess we're redoing all the handicap ramps while we're at this and making sure. You know, the push buttons are the right location, so it's not just adding the audible, there's, there's actually geometric. You know, work that, that has to get done because we're up, we're gonna upgrade the signal, so.
So I have a question, because it's almost midnight, so why not just have a really interesting discussion right before we adjourn, but. Um, you know, in universal design, the idea is that. Before you have to make that expensive investment. To adapt things, you plan for it, so. There's wider things, uh, things might be a little bit lower, so like what you're saying about the push button. Could we as a township striving for accessibility just? Design from the get-go for accessibility? Um. Where it would reduce your costs um in the long run, probably if that was a goal you wanted to achieve?
Yes, and, and so we do that for um handicap accessibility, we haven't been doing it for, for blind. Accessibility, so that's what we can do is accommodate that into all new signal designs. And the ramps are only an issue because apparently they don't meet our, the, the standard anymore, even though they were. Seems like they were just, just built, um. Yeah.
Okay, alright, so um. Just getting back to the budget discussion. I think I've stated, I'm pretty much, I, I would feel good about not making any changes other than the, the one that. I'd like to make with the, the playground upgrades and that's so that we can. Really get a handle on. That program and shifting those costs to CRPR and. Really. Yeah, but. I wanted to know what others feel about like the total budget, like. Other than that line item thing that I'm talking about. You know, I think Steve would probably be ready to pass the budget with no changes. Um. Pam and Patty, uh, what are you thinking in terms of that? How do you feel about our spending and the projects that we've have planned and whatnot?
I'm, I. I might be the only one, but I'm a little worried about removing. That money from playground safety. Um. Only because I feel like. If. We've been doing. So much of a better job. And I mean, you know, wh- what are we talking about, like twenty thousand dollars in the scheme of things? Isn't huge. And if COG doesn't really do what we're demanding of them to do. Then who's, who's left with the responsibility at that point?
Well, we're gonna do it, we're not gonna let something be unsafe. And so the money, we would have the money to, to do a repair if. If that were to occur, I mean, we wouldn't need to do a budget amendment, but we would do a much budget amendment, so. It's not like it's so much money that that amount couldn't be found for a repair. But I think that if we really want to. Get to a position where we have a good separation of who does what in terms of our roles. We can't both maintain line item budgets for the same thing, it's gotta be one or the other, we have to pick one. And so I think that.
I know it's, I know it's trying to force them to do what they should do, I, I.
No, it's not forcing, it's us, us doing what we can to take ourselves to that next place. Just like with the idea that Steph uh that Dave talked about. Building on our earlier conversation about playground inspection. Um, we can, we, we aren't putting ourselves in a position of risk, but we're taking a. A move in terms of our policy in a direction that we want to go. So, but, but I'm, but setting that aside, it's more important that we talk about the total budget, so let's. Get your and Patty's kind of perceptual and, you know. The thing I'm saying is a small, very small, small amount of the budget, so let's get your thoughts on the, the larger. Are there any thoughts you have? On passing this budget as presented?
I think I really don't have a great problem with it, partly because. Uh, I'm hoping that that infrastructure bill does give us something to cover some of this stuff that we're hoping for. And if we. If we don't have it there. I don't know if we could ask for the money. I'm not sure how that works, so. I mean, i- if we're. If, if we have things that we need money for and, and it's in the budget, then, then it's a real valid thing to ask for, but if it's not in there. Then I'm not sure that you can even ask for it, so.
It seems.
And I, you know.
Those foundations always.
I'm new to all this.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm new to all this, I don't.
No, that's a good point, the, those kinds of foundations can't hurt, I don't, you know, like to have it. Like Dave said, sh- the closer to shovel ready, the better you are i- uh, in terms of positioning yourself for money, so. Yeah, the, the pattern of planning to get to that goal. Would lead somebody to believe that, you know, that we're not, aren't just cooking up a scheme and that it's been planned and that we've all agreed it's a good direction, so I think that's a good point. Patty, do you have any?
I'd say, yeah, yeah, I'm with it, yeah.
Patty, do you have any thoughts on the overall budget or?
I'm. Uh, in a perfect world, I would like to. See it reduced a little bit, but I also understand the very thoughtful consideration by the department heads and. And David and so um. Yeah, no, I'm okay with moving forward with it, so.
Thanks, Lisa, I'll come back to, I have a question for Dave, oh, and Dave Modricar has his hand up, so I'll get to Dave Modricar first.
Yeah, sorry, I, I didn't remember where we ended up with this in my narrative. I had a Buildings and Ground Superintendent, but I didn't have it. Line itemed with the salary and I didn't know what you.
So, so we've got two staffing items then that are still remaining for discussion, I think we. Want to make sure we hit before we adjourn, I do know, like Dave said, it's midnight, but we, we wanna.
No, that's good, so we are having, uh, Dave, what is, uh, the two, do you want to jump to the two staffing, yeah?
Sure, so what you're talking about, focus on the ordinance enforcement officer first. Uh, that Eric, I don't know if you have the numbers call up quick, but it was about forty five thousand dollars would be the additional. Uh, budget item to move that individual from a part-time position to a full-time position. Um, you know, for my recommendation on that, I think if it were, i- if the board supports it, I'm okay with recommending that, that be added. With the caveat that I am not quite ready yet to make that change. So I would res- want to reserve the right as, as I would to kind of evaluate that situation and decide whether the full-time position were justified.
Okay, um, do you want to present the other?
The Building and Road Superintendent, um. Yeah, excuse me, Building and Ground Superintendent. Uh, is a little bit trickier, it's um, uh, a more costly staff item, it's a new staff position. Didn't make it into the operating, but as Dave said, it was in, in the CIP and, and the narrative. Reflected it, I think it was just an oversight that it didn't make its way in there. But you're probably, and we'd have to massage the numbers out a little bit. Uh, in total, looking at between sixty and eighty thousand. When you factor in salary for that person, plus assuming that it's an internal hire. You know, that specific pro- promoted individual may see a small adjustment in salary, it's certainly not going to be that full sixty thousand. Might be, uh, might even be a kind of a stagnant salary if I'm, I, I understand it correctly, so that would just be a lateral move. But we would then have to backfill that individual's position and then we'd have to hire somebody in all likelihood. Trying to speak in generalities without giving away who it might be. But uh, you know, we'd have to kind of work our way down through to, to the rank and file, so, or to the frontline workers, so that this way we could. It would, it would result in an additional person, it's just a matter of when and what that salary would be, is what I'm trying to say in so many words. So if the board wanted to, uh, was looking for a recommendation, I think Dave is, is recommending that we proceed. I'm a little bit more concerned about it, if we want to wait till twenty twenty three, that'd probably be where my recommendation is. But um, I, I know that the position is warranted, we have the work. Uh, and, and we could, you know, really use the assistance in engineering, so. I wanted to give the board an opportunity to discuss it and I'll, I'll support whichever the outcome is.
Well, when I previously had talked about my readiness to pass the budget, other than my small caveat, I. Had already included those things in there, so. Um, I don't know if others were on that same track or not. And yes, I would of course. I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Oh, I, I was just gonna say, we did discuss it, the CIP, so. Cause that one was included in the CIP discussion, right, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I was assuming that that was. Yeah.
Right.
That was recommended, yeah.
Yes, and what I was gonna say is, of course, uh, Dave and Dave, then you all can battle it out as to. When the appropriate beginning time is, or you know, that's your, that's your realm, so um. Whatever the timeline. What's that, Lisa?
Is that the asset management technician, okay? Yeah. I vaguely remember that. Discussion, um. Yeah, I would want to hold off on making the um. Uh. The part-time into full-time, the um. Code enforcement, no.
Ordinance Enforcement Officer.
Ordinance Enforcement Officer.
Ordinance Enforcement Officer. Holding off on making that full-time. Until twenty twenty three, holding off on the Building and Ground Superintendent until twenty three. The other ones that I had flagged were the um. Two part-time. Engineering assistance and the part-time GIS technician. Um, I'd also want to wait on those or because it's listed as all college students. Maybe re-categorize those as intern positions, my concern is that they'll grow into full-time if they're listed as part-time, either because they can't be filled as part-time. Or because those jobs just always grow into full-time eventually, and I don't think we're ready to. Take on um that many full-time employees, but since you've already. Kind of indicated they would be students, uh, putting it in an internship category makes it. Uh, not equivalent to um adding. Uh. Regular permanent staffing, so that's how I would view that differently, if that would be a consideration you'd be willing to make. Um, you know, I know there's different parameters on having a staff person versus an intern, but since I was considering that, since you had, you know, indicated you'd like a college student for all. Through those positions.
If I could just comment, for many years. Uh, we would hire a, a college student to do, you know, inspections during the summer. There's no intent for bringing those in full-time, it's really just for the heavy workload that we have. Um. But I, I'm fine with them being interns, it's just I don't know if there's money for that program. And I really don't have the staff to mentor them, like, might be expected for an internship. Um. But certainly i- if those positions aren't filled, you know, we'll. We'll build the projects and we'll, we'll do the work, we just won't be able to be there as much as a whole.
I was gonna say I'm concerned about. In particular, the GIS technician, maybe I don't quite understand how things work, but we are like really heavy on. Projects and I heard of like a lot of in-house, we can do this survey in-house, we can do this thing in design in-house. I'm thinking that like that. Staff is important to get that pipeline full of information to do that. Those projects.
That, that staff person or that staff need ebbs and flows, we, we had at one point two GIS, full-time GIS technicians on staff. And then it got to the point where we were ahead of things and we really didn't justify it, one of our GIS techs moved to the planning position. Uh, Christina, and so we just never backfilled that second position and so it's, we're just kind of catching up a little bit and then we'll. Have, be okay with one GIS technician and we may have to bring interns in or, or future part-time assistants in. As the needs arise, but there wouldn't also not be, there's not an intent of bringing that person on full-time, but. That one's a little bit more nebulous.
Okay, so. Are you saying? The reason there's a request for that is because now there's an, we, is it ever flow? Now there's a need and you can see it backing off?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, so. Not that. So you're kind of confirming my thought on that sort of like a support for our heavy load of projects, plus we're getting a little bit backed up, so we're kind of needing that.
Yeah.
Can you in with?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Um, the, I would say the ordinance enforcement officer. Like, it's been a couple of years now, we've been talking about taking that person to full-time but not doing it, so. Like, I understand your concern about like adding the staff, but I'm seeing the need for it that we've put off for some time, so. Um. I would, I would, I would be supportive of them going full-time, um. I have a question about the Superintendent of Lands is what I got of the title, which is not. It's Superintendent of Facilities and Land, what is it?
The, the, the title has changed, kind of like the tree trimmer and the dendrition and. This has been like an asset management technician, an engineering technician, a Buildings and Ground Superintendent. All, all the duties have pretty much remained the same, that the job title. Has changed a little and with the most recent job title, that person would be supervising the custodian, the custodial staff also.
Okay.
It's really, it's, it's an asset management.
Yeah.
In the field doing PA one call locates, uh, traffic signal maintenance technician. And then somebody that's really. Savvy with these types of things, that it's also savvy enough to handle the building. Systems and the HVAC contracts and um. Um, the gas boy system and just all the building systems, the um. The door um access systems, just all the systems that come with, with the buildings. Uh, vendor, vendor contracts and whatnot, so it's kind of a multifaceted. Um. Position.
And would you, do you envision that person having a, a, also some responsibility for? The park assets?
I, I would say this and it, um, I know I'm stepping kind of on a edge when I say this, but. Um, if we. Did. Have to do something with parks, that it would fall under the umbrella of this person perhaps.
Now that thing is like, it sounds a lot like a Lou Brungard of COG. The responsibilities that you're laying out, like a facilities manager.
Along with some field work and.
Right.
That aren't just buildings, assets that are traffic signals and. Um, all the assets that we have to help with the asset management part of it.
Very cool, okay, yes, I was now really recalling that conversation and how. I have been advocating for that. Level of management of our assets, um, and the more we grow, the more important that is going to be, so. Again, I am really understanding the concern about adding additional staff. Um, but I would be supportive of that position as well. Um, but I don't know what others think, I don't know, um. If I missed anything that you had presented, Lisa. There, oh, the stormwater part-time engineers, uh. Part.
Part-time engineers, yeah, there, there would be. Part-time, two part-time engineers, not stormwater. part-time, two part-time engineers, not stormwater. But presumably they might do some of that. But they're not called that.
I would say that I have less of an opinion on. Um. But I might also be concerned again about the level of projects that we've got and whether they're necessary for that or not.
Are we talking about Fund 20 right now?
I thought that's where it was, but then Dave said not stormwater. So now I'm not sure. I'm just.
Well, in the um, for for Capitol Road projects were the two uh, part-time. You know, college student inspectors that Mr. concerned about.
Yeah.
And then under the Stormwater Fund, Fund 20, that's where we have conversion of a part-time to a full-time.
Sorry, I had blended those two things. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you.
That's because Eric did it when he put the tablet.
He jinxed us all for the night.
It was four hours ago. I don't know.
It was yesterday. Um, okay, um. Right, I would support the part-time going to full-time. Um. I have less opinion again of the the student type positions. Um, and it would be a great if we could get interns, but like you're saying, who knows if we can. Does Pam, Patty or Steve uh, have anything to add into the mix with the staff discussion?
Really, I'm still fine with the way things are including, you know, the 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 staff positions we discussed previously, so.
Yeah. Thanks. Patty or Pam?
Yeah, no, I, I'm still fine with it too. I would just defer to what um Dave Provoca or Dave Modricer think they can live with or without ultimately.
Yeah, I agree. It's if if it's needed, then we should do it.
I would just add that, you know, I think and they will, you know, the staff will decide whether, you know, we we authorize it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to go forward with it if they decide that it's not a not justified by the workload and at the time, so.
Yeah, it's not like
Ultimately staffing is, uh, adding new staff is, it would be my decision. Um, so I mean, I can say that if the board approves the additions, I can continue to keep an eye on things and I've got some unanswered questions, particularly about the ordinance officer position. Um, and we'll proceed, uh, if if I think it's the the right way to to go, or if we you know, perhaps deferred another year. I mean, I'm really open to the to any suggestions from the board on this one, but um. You know, staffing, remember, is a recurring cost. When you add a new full-time equivalent versus even more so perhaps than making a part-time or full-time because that's already kind of in the recurring box. You're just adding benefits to the and and a little extra salary, so.
I think you've got really good blueprints to implement our vision, uh, the strategic plan and this like our policies. Um, so, um. I also think that it's really an ambitious work work plan that we have laid out. Um, and I think that if if this, if this uh, whole um document taken together is what we need to implement that plan and that vision. And there are going to be natural controls because there's just no way all that work can possibly get done in a year. I think that you're going to be able to prioritize well if all the tools are at your disposal, right? That you might need. And then if you don't need them, you won't be able to use them because you can't, because you don't have enough time to. So that's why I feel really good about passing that total package and then um. Yeah, I guess that's, that's, that, I'm, that's still, that's still where I'm at, I guess. Um, which is basically passing this. And then I know staff is gonna tap the brakes when they need to and, you know, come to us for questions. And that is kind of my biggest concern is that um, there, there's so much that the priorities of like the Pine Grove Mills streetlights, for example, don't, don't get um deprioritized because like it's a smaller project amongst all of these large projects. So just um. That, and I think there was another one I was like worried that might get kind of lost in the shuffle. So just like my only concern is just making sure those few small priorities that have like a lot of meaning are are made, made sure to be, to be hit and not kind of lost in the shuffle. Pam?
Um, yeah, I, since you're using the word priorities, I'm I'm wondering if since some of the road projects, um, there were questions about, is it possible to kind of approach them later? Um, I I don't know if there's a priority list that um, Dave Modricer, I guess, would would be the one to ask. If there's things that you feel uh, need to be done sooner than others. So that if there's something you don't get to, um, that'll be in the to be done later list. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that was kind of the the process that we used when we developed the CIP and kind of the backlog roads and the and the roads that we need to work on now to keep them from going. You know, in the backlog category. So so really, that's the process we went through to get to the, to the list, to the list that you have.
Okay.
Right. I I think that list of road projects is tremendously ambitious. It is a is a lot of design work and a and a lot of bidding to do. And we're gonna do our best to get it all done. And but I I think that the point that we was made was that we're we're infusing this capital. Get catching up on the backlog, getting a lot of repairs done. And then, you know, future program years, it's not going to be a $4 million every year list of of road of road projects.
So like in this year, when we have all these road projects, also isn't the Y intersection going to go under construction? And also isn't North Atherton also going to boat go back under construction? So like there's going to be a time where everybody is so angry, so angry this year.
And 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 that's one of the reasons we asked for the inspectors, because the guys that are designing this stuff and trying to push stuff out the bid are the same ones that have to meet with the contractor and stand out in the field and watch him do the work. And so because we have an ambitious program, we're asking for some relatively, you know, not real expensive um, folks to help us with that field work part of it.
That makes sense. Okay, so I just need to, I'm sorry, can I, uh, you guys think about that? Can I ask Steve? Um, can you, for the board, uh, either Dave, talk a little bit about what that budget of thirty-seven something thousand dollars for the so-called playgrounds. I always pick these topics that make me seem like I hate puppies, like forget playground safety. I want a zero budget for playground safety. It's really not a good look. Um, Dave Provoca, could you um tell us a few things that came out of that budget? Uh, last year and the year before, if you can.
Um, yeah, so the last couple of years, we did the uh, play equipment at Fairbrook Park. That was a pretty significant expenditure out of that. I think it exhausted that entire uh allotment. Uh, we did the repair of the slide at Homestead Park out of that allocation and the other um, kind of flex seal repairs that we made. Uh, we had done a another project.
Right there, one second. Could you pause one second right there? So Pam, to your question, okay, so we talked yesterday, day before yesterday about how we want to expand on that spreadsheet of parks. So this has nothing to do with CRPR right now and their responsibilities. This is all about us right now. We do capital investments in our own municipal parks. Um, so like before last year, we weren't even maybe sure because it wasn't gathered in one spot, which then um, Sentry stood so nicely, like what year things might have been installed? Like, I I get elected, I have no idea. Dave was, you know, promoted and he doesn't really know and it's not in a book somewhere. So now we know everything's gathered in one spot. We're gonna plan now for things like that Fairbrook replacement that took that whole budget. We're planning now for that. So before we weren't, so we needed that line item. But now we are, so now we have line items under Fairbrook Park that says install play equipment. So it's not just about now. The other thing Dave mentioned was the slide repair. That was a surprise to me because I thought that came out of public works budget. Because we talked about how it was time and materials. Nonetheless.
Well, there's two things, uh, that there was, the time and materials is the flex seal, that that Mickey Mouse repair that we made. There was also a replacement of the slide that
Oh, okay.
A bigger component of that, right?
Okay, so then that again is actually not about CRPR. That's about us planning. I think most of the costs that are about, eh, that are in limbo or whatever, limbo land. Uh, that we absorb are actually in in public works department budget typically. Because they're the, just the repair, they're not the like the replace a whole thing. The replace a whole thing goes to our own planning uh, for those things. So that slide replacement. You know, that's something we should probably be able to plan for. So when we get complaints, oh, the slide is rickety. Oh, then we go out and look at it. Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to replace that in a couple of years. That should go into our capital improvement budget, like with that as a line item. Not coming out of a general budget, in my personal opinion, because they're like we, if we are planning at a more detailed level, we're gonna have just much better ability to to do that. And so so that's why in it turns out that would be why I would be wanting to reduce that budget because we are trying to move the township, actually, in a direction of better planning for a replacement of amenities at parks that we're responsible for. So, did you want to add any other things that have been taken out of that line item? So we just know in the future. What would be taken out? Dave, sorry, back to you. I stopped you in the middle of you were saying.
No, no, that, I mean, those were the main ones since in the last couple of years. We, we did uh, like a pollinator. Uh, so a pollinator garden, I think at Fairbrook, part of that came out of undesignedated. But that has a broader umbrella than just the playground safety and updates. Remove some tree limbs when we had to, I think, rent a piece of equipment to do that. Um, so miscellaneous, uh, but nothing significant in the last couple of years. So I think I'm reducing that to 5,000 is is
Well, that was my proposal. I mean, I could go in a different direction and say like, like you just said, rent a piece of equipment to do a tree trim thing. Typically, that would come out of public works budget, but I actually, as an ultimate goal, really want parks costs itemized eh, independent of public works or wherever they are, just so we can understand parks investment as a cost center. So the other direction to go would be to put things that might be in the public works department budget into that parks budget. Um, but I think that that's a much more cumbersome ask. So in lieu of doing that, I would yes, then ask that that incidentals fund be more like incidentals and that when we plan for amenity replacement, that it goes under, you know, like now we have like Fairbrook Park and Homestead Park and Dooduck Park and that it would go then under the park where it would be being installed in. Um. Or else why would we have them there? Because
I can, I can see Eric agreeing uh entirely with your statement there, because I know, I mean, that's as as he likes, as as good accountants do. You know, put them under the, put them under the strata that they belong in. And that's a way that we could administer it. I mean, much like the other undesignedated or uncommitted reserve fund, if um, our line item, it's a, it's a buffer that's there. It's a cushion that's in the the fund. But it would be applied as an expenditure item to the relevant park. Uh, so we can, we we would handle that on like an accounting side where where the journal entries are made.
Okay, so your counterproposal is to keep the money in there, but when it's spent, that it would be put into is that what you're saying? I'm sorry.
I'm not counter proposing anything. I, you can reduce it to 5,000. I think that'd be fine. I, you know, it, of course.
I'm sorry, I'm not, maybe I've put that wrongly. You're I I can't tell if you're saying the same thing as me or not.
I am saying the same thing. I I think I'm saying the same thing, which is that even though the the appropriation would be there as a playground safety and update, if it were for an expenditure at suburban park or Haymarket, it would be applied to that account as opposed to applying to the playground safety and update account or the undesignedated account.
Okay, and so then we could reduce that amount because w- we wouldn't be having that big of an expenditure come out of there. Is that what you're saying?
Well, if not, not really, but whatever you want that cushion to be, whether it's the thirty-seven five or the 5,000.
Uh, okay.
Anywhere in between or or lower or higher.
All right, well, I'm think I'm saying, and then we can end everybody's misery. Stop talking. What I think I'm saying is that I believe in us and our ability to plan for putting those amenities underneath the park where they go from this day forward. And therefore I would propose, I guess, uh, trying to read the room, I would propose a $10,000 cushion in that line item of playground safety and that $10,000 entry be in this year's budget. With then the idea going forward of putting, putting it under the park where it goes, goes in. That's what I would propose. Does everybody understand my proposal? First, just tell me if you understand it. Okay. And what are your thoughts on it? And then we'll move on. Lisa has the thumbs up. So clear, beautiful.
Fine with it.
She's fine with it.
Okay, so ten
Seems fine with it. And Patty? Okay, Patty's fine with it. All right, so that's our budget change. Um. Do we need, this is a, an a special meeting, so do you, would you like a motion, Dave?
Uh, I I don't think so. I mean, it's it's entirely your prerogative, but I can make the the reduction. The addition of the two staffing items, the ordinance officer and the building ground superintendent. I would have to refine the numbers, so a motion would probably be difficult for you to formulate right now. Uh, until Eric, Dave and I and Jenna all are able to kind of come to consensus on a budget item. So we'll work those in and then the next steps would be to present the budget for tentative adoption December 6th. Final adoption on December 13th. So you would see these uh, additions in the, in that tentative time.
Great. It's 12:29, so I'm gonna stall for a minute because I think we're gonna break a record, Steve. Beginning of this meeting, you said something 12:30 and I'm looking down and it's 12:29 right now.
I was keeping in mind that the last year we had three meetings, so.
That's true. Okay, is there anything else that we need to wrap up before I call Lisa?
Well, just when Steve said that we had three meetings on this last year, I didn't recall that, but I did want to suggest before we ended tonight that we please begin these at 6:00 PM next year, because I know I won't remember to suggest that when this comes up again, but um, in my head, these were starting at six, so I had to readjust my
They 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 were, they normally do. CNET couldn't cover it at six this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Book them tomorrow.
Yeah, like act like it's Penn State graduation and book them tomorrow. For next year. Um, all right. Anything else for the good of the order? I see we've made it to 12:30, so I can, I, I can, are we ready, Dave? Are we good?
I have nothing else that was flagged. Uh, I think, well, did we, did we resolve? Uh, I think, well, did we, did we resolve the, um, this, the streetlight at Pine Grove Mills, I guess that's all.
Yeah, because it was really, all the big money was in the other place, um, and we'll just, we could use the rest for decorations, if I understand that narrative properly.
The Pine Sap comes up with a banner they want to do, then they can go to that other uh, line item.
I think it's in capital reserve is where that other one is. Yeah, um, so that works out, so that's great. Okay, I think we're ready for the motion. All right, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody, thanks, everybody, thanks, staff, so much.
Thanks so much.
Good night. Thank you.
Night.